Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30 and I'll call our work session to order. The city clerk will note that all council members are present. And our work sessions are very informal and we go directly to our agenda. But I need to continue to let everyone know that as we are still in this global pandemic crisis, our meeting is conducted both in person and online. All of our city council members and staff are in the council chambers and practicing social distance, as you can see. Members of the public may attend in person if they like. Otherwise, the public can watch this meeting online at Burnsville MN.gov/meetings or Comcast Channel 16 or 859. The public can also still participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join or call 651-372-8299. And more information is available on our meeting's webpage and in the council agenda packet. Please note there is an audio delay if you are watching us on TV or online. So if you speak, please mute your video broadcast first. In Zoom meetings, attendees experience audio issues. We ask you to leave the meeting and then log back in. This usually resolves the issue. Okay, so we'll move on to the first item on the agenda. And the first item on the agenda this evening is the Minnesota Valley Transportation Authority presentation. And we welcome our, I think, Ms. Faulkner, you're going to introduce Mr. Winder.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have had this on your agenda for quite some time and the timing wasn't right. And tonight's meeting is all about transportation. So it seemed fitting that the Chief Executive Officer of the MVTA, Luther Winder, is here this evening to give you an update of what's happening there. There also are a couple MVTA staffers in the Zoom meeting. Should some particular questions come up, I just want you to know that as well as a matter of protocol. And with that, also Councilmember Keeley is the council-appointed liaison to the MVTA Board, and I am the alternative to him. With that, I'll turn it over to Luther to give his presentation. And thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you and welcome.
Thank you so much, Mayor, council members. A little agenda here. First thing I want to talk about, it's been a very challenging, I think, year for us all. First thing, I'm going to give an update regarding COVID-19, how it's affected our transit and what we've done at MVTA to mitigate that and how to keep our customers safe. Our focus has been health and safety. We have taken our cues from the CDC. The CDC puts out, as well as in conjunction with the FTA, provides standards and recommendations for bus cleaning as well as sanitizing and disinfecting procedures. What we've done as an agency, we have not only met those, which is cleaning daily, but we've actually superseded them, that we do continue to clean after every particular trip. As well as we've also looked, obviously, to promote from the CDC recommendation social distancing on our buses, as well as we've implemented the governor's executive order for wearing face coverings. I do want to say, one of the interesting things that we have continued to see, and the great thing about transit is that there's always different promotions, things we find out in our industry. So what we're rolling out in the next couple of weeks is what's called, it's actually an online competition where we're going to be asking our customers to take pictures on the bus, on our buses, with their face coverings, and hashtag and send it into our Twitter and our Facebook page. We're going to pick winners out weekly and provide them with bus passes. It's a way to positively promote the customers who are actually utilizing those face coverings in a non-competeable, positive way. So we're looking forward to starting that campaign very, very shortly. As far as COVID-19, as I've talked about before, we continue to limit capacity on our buses. We do change air filters on our buses daily. We've removed all paper products, that schedules, all papers removed from our buses. We have installed bus barriers. It's been, that's been a new, it's actually been a new accomplishment we've done in the past, in the past few weeks. So all of our vehicles on the road now do have a plexiglass barricade that protects the operator as well as the public when they board in a light and paying their fare. We've also did something in our, in three of our, two of our stations, which is Burnsville Transit Station, excuse me, and two of our garages where our administrative employees are. We've actually installed HVAC filters outside of our, outside of our current HVAC system. It's a UVA, it's a UVA light filtration system. It's supposed to obviously continue to actually clean and sanitize the air for not only the individuals who traverse through Burnsville Transit Station, but also employees who come from the Burnsville Bus Garage, as well as Eagan Bus Garage for our employees as well. With that being said, it's not all, it's not all, you know, COVID-related. And we're going to circle back, we talked about ridership and how COVID's affected us. But there actually, there have actually been some positives as well as system review and reinvestment in this particular service area. First things first, myself, and it's interesting, and it's kind of changed a little bit, but I'm served on a national TCRP panel, which is Transit Cooperative Research Program. I'm selected on the panel with about six other CEOs from small and medium-sized agencies from around the country. And we've been looking at innovative practices for planning mid-sized, for planning for small and mid-sized transit agencies. We're developing a report right now. So we started off meeting in the National Institutes of Health and National Institute of Science and Technology in DC. Now we do Zoom meetings. But one of the things we've looked, one of the things we've been, continued to look at is just different. We started out looking at just ways from first and last mile, as well as how we could obviously continue to look at proprietary partnerships across, across the nation, and looking at best practices we see from other transit agencies in order to obviously to engage and increase ridership. Recently, the last few meetings were really focused on COVID because that's actually affected ridership. But some of, the report will be out in the next, next two months. But some of the things we've adopted, we've looked at, will actually help us in our service area continue to kind of win back customers, looking at some of the service models that some other trains have done across, across the country. And I will say, MNDOT actually submitted some good information, a good case study that we'll be utilizing in that, in this, in this report too, in the next, the next couple of months, come on next couple of months. So I'll forward that over when that's, for a review or come back and talk to that when that report is finished. As far as Burnsville service update in particular, COVID-19 in the beginning obviously led to a number of route suspensions in late March. But in June and September, service changes re-induced many routes back to regular weekday service, with others coming back on a limited schedule. Currently, right now, we're operating 55% of our base schedule pre-COVID. We're actually, in October, when we do an expansion of our Connect service to Rosemont and Apple Valley, we'll be at 59% of our base served platform hour pre-COVID. Our current service, as you see, our 442 still runs, that's our Burnsville, Apple Valley on, on the weekends. We serve a 44 service that goes from Mall of America to Burnsville Transit Station. Our 460 to Minneapolis is operating. Just recently, back in September, we put our, our 465, which is one of, obviously going to UNM. And we've seen, and first day of service was actually yesterday. We've seen about, I think, 60 students that rode the bus to go back to UNM. So there, we're seeing, hoping to continue to see that to increase. As well as our 480 service out of Eagan, you serve Burnsville Transit Station, but it still serves St. Paul. And a route 495, of course, which goes from Burnsville Transit Station to Mall of America, as well as serves Marshall Road and some of the businesses in Shakopee and Empire Lake. Overall ridership, just like I think what the Metro Transit had the same. We were all, we were having a banner year in, in January. We had record ridership in January and then in February, we were holding, we were holding consistent. We were going to have a banner year. And then, you know, our market fell a little bit. What we've continued to see is we're about, we're down about 55% total ridership. This time, this same snapshot of July of last year. It's a good, it's one thing to understand that local suburban ridership, local suburban continues to be extremely strong across the region. We're at, we're at 52, 50% of, 50% rider, 50% ridership for our local, for our local, suburban local. Our Express is at 10% of what it was because obviously individuals aren't traversing downtown. But another bright spot is our, actually our Express Suburban service, which is our 495, that's 70%. So understanding that across the board, suburban and local continues to be one of the strongest performing route, route categories alongside BRT in the region. Because individuals may not be going, may not be traversing down to Minneapolis or St. Paul, but they're still traversing, obviously, throughout the suburbs to and from, to and from, to and from work, shopping, things of that nature. And our Express Suburban, as you know, as those, those individuals are going to our manufacturing hubs, as well as our work, our works that we see in the suburban market, they're not traditionally 8 to 430 work-from-home individuals either. And what we see nationally is there's probably going to be a reorganization moving forward, that suburban transit ridership has not fallen as much as we've seen urban. Because those individuals, there's, because there's not been the economic pressure for those individuals to work from home, as you've seen in some of your larger urban cities. So that's one of, that's one of the trends. And I actually came out also in the Dakota County Chamber of Commerce study as well, too. One observation they noted as well. And what we do see in the island region, but in our service, but in our service area, suburban and local continues to be relatively strong, comparable, comparably. MVTA Connect, so that's our app-based service that we started, that we started last year that serves Savage and Western Burnsville. The top Burnsville destinations for that service, and that's, if you're familiar with that, that's our on-demand service similar to Uber and Lyft, where customers download an app on their phone and request a ride, just as they would do Uber and Lyft within the service, geographical service area that you see on the map there. They can pay on the app, or we also give the option for individuals to pay on the bus. Our top destinations for that, I'm very proud of, is our Burnsville Transit Station, Walmart, as well as retail areas surrounding Burnsville Center and Niklet Avenue. One of the great things where we designed this was to be a feeder service to our traditional fixed route, not necessarily to supplement our fixed route. So it's continued to be where one of our top destinations at Burnsville Transit, where individuals come to the transit station and then catch local fixed route services to diverse the region to get to where they, to get to where they need to get to, where they need to go, excuse me. We do have a planned expansion for Apple Valley and Rosemont in the fall of 2020. Orange Line Connector, that's a service of, it's a few years out. So MVTA was awarded funding through, through the association in 2018. That's going to be weekday local service to connect Orange Line Phase 1 Terminus with anticipated redevelopment in Burnsville and high-density residential areas. It's going to have 30-minute on frequency all day. The project costs about 3.4 million and its estimated start date is going to be spring 22. What we're going to be rolling out in spring of, late of 2021 is a working group, obviously with the city of Burnsville to continue to refine what that service is going to look like and where it's going to operate, where it's going to operate to. You can kind of see on the map right now, it's kind of a, it's a rough draft of what we have. Obviously, heart of the cities will be at Fairview Bridges, Burnsville Center. That's where we're talking about for anticipated redevelopment, where it shares around Burnsville Center. As well as for high-density residential areas, there's some density happening around Greenhaven Drive Apartments. So we're going to serve that particular area as, as those things come online in the future. But there'll be a work group working closely with the city as we design, as we design that service to connect into the Orange Line. Moving along, one of the things we were doing prior to COVID, but COVID really necessitated the view, is we're doing a system-wide study. So we're about to go out in the next, the next few weeks with the RFP release. It's going to be a comprehensive review of MVTA Transit Service. We'll examine unmet needs and opportunities. The study will address factors influencing use of public transit, parking capacity, schedules, route design, amenities, marketing, land use, COVID-19, et cetera. The timeline for that study will be, will be, like I said, fall of 2020. The study kickoff will be late 2020, early 2021. And the study completion, we're looking for summer of 2021. One of the things that we'll be rolling out really soon, that Erin, who's a, who is the planning manager for MVTA, will be sending out, will be setting up a work group with all the planners of all the cities that we have in our service area. As a prerequisite to start talking about just various service, what we're looking at during service changes, as well as getting an understanding of just what's happening, obviously, in every one of, everywhere in particular cities. So we're going to start off Zoom, Zoom calls. And we'll use that to feed into, that'll be the prerequisite as we feed into our system-wide study as we move forward. So that'll be coming out, that invitation will be coming out really soon. And we're kind of excited, it's kind of a, a good way, obviously, to continue that communication, that dialogue as we build where we're going to go to next on the 21st in 2021. Hopefully, 2021, a little better than 2020, but that's our hope. Best news that we have today, I think, is our BBG Modernization Grant. I do want to thank the mayor as well as Councilmember Keeley for their support, support we have via support letters. We have been applying for this particular grant, for the bus facilities rehab grant through the FTA for the past four years. There's been multiple years that no, no transit agency in the state of Minnesota had received any funding. Our full legislative delegation has been very supportive, obviously, of pushing back and getting information to try not only for this, but for the Build Grant, to try to get some funds, obviously, to us, to, to any entity in the state of Minnesota. Representative Craig has been very instrumental, Representative Emmer and St. Cloud. I mean, trust the list goes on, Representative Senator Klobuchar's office, Senator Smith, every, every representative you name has been, has written a support letter or followed up with us concerning its funding. This past, a few weeks ago, we were notified that we did receive $2.8 million through the federal grant to, to modernize Burnsville Bus Garage. Now, this, from our understanding, you want to understand, Burnsville Bus Garage started off in the 19, as a 1970s roofing, as a roofing tile plant. It was never designed as a bus garage. Overall, it's also the lowest-ranked bus garage in the region. It's not even, it's not even really listed as acceptable. This is our Phase 1 part of the project. In order to put this in state-of-good-repair, we'd take about $8 million. We submitted this request, we also have requests in the association. We looked at as how much we could match, because we may had, we may have had to, to do the match ourselves without support from the council. The council will be helping us provide us with the match for this, which is great for this particular grant here. So this will be our first phase. And we'll come back and do a presentation, myself or Samantha, on exactly what we're doing at the, at the, just at the Burnsville Bus Garage. In 2018, like I said, we ranked last in, last in the region among facilities. It's our Phase 1, estimated 8 million. And we would just want to continue to thank all of our local mayor, thank you. Because we'll be coming back again in the future. Obviously, Commissioner Keeley, Councilmember Keeley, thank you so much again for your, for your support letters and your advocacy for this, for this particular project. And this actually obviously directly benefits, obviously, the workers who work in the city of Burnsville. Are there any questions?
So on your study that you're going to be doing, are you going to also evaluate the shifts in jobs and the shifts in industry due to innovation and automation? So that you can truly understand what the ridership is going to be? Because right now, you're doing well with 55% of pre-COVID. But, you know, is that sustainable as you continue to move forward?
Yes, one of the things, we've started, we have a program right now called COGO, where we do have a lot of information. We reach out currently. COGO is our business, our business program, that we have a lot of consultation and communication with local businesses in our service area, talking about the work shifts, what they're, see their stuff moving in the future. We definitely be looking at what we see, the work states and the landscape looking at in the future when it comes to just commuting in general in our, in our particular service area, pre-COVID, pre and after COVID. So that would definitely be part of, be a part of the study.
Yeah, what are you hearing with regard to, on, on your national organization that you belong to with regard to transit?
Great question. One of the things we're seeing, obviously, express service across the board, BRT service, even some light rail service, those, those services are designed to obviously take large groups of masses to downtown. Suburban, same thing with suburban commuter service. What we're seeing is the opportunity to us, there's going to start, and we're seeing that now of that reverse commute, where you have, where you have companies that are looking to relocate outside of the urban core to the suburbs, but that still necessitates the ability to pull those individuals from the core to the suburbs. And that's actually been exacerbated by COVID in a positive way. So what we continue to see on our Route 495 at 70% of, you know, pre-COVID levels, what, that's what nationally, what's, what we're seeing. This region's a little unique too, because of some other factors that have applied to that. But definitely COVID, we're seeing the market grow for suburban, for suburban, for suburban transit.
And I imagine that you will then also adjust your routes, rather than all of them express downtown, you're going to have to fan out on the 494 corridor.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so I was on the board of MVTA when we bought the Burnsville Garage. So I know what it is like and I know all the needs. Because when we built the Eagan, because I was on the board when we built Eagan, Burnsville really needed a lot of work. So, and it, so I'm glad to see that we have the, the money to upgrade it so that it can be, at least be in good standards within the metro.
Thank you. I would say, if anyone wants to, we have been really working hard. We've been taking the opportunity from COVID to work on our facilities because obviously we have low ridership. Customers aren't using our facilities as, as much, but from the commuter standpoint. So we've done a really good job from a cosmetic standpoint, just like cosmetic repainting and some plants outside of Burnsville Bus Garage, looks completely different now. Drive by, it looks, inside, not so much, but outside, we've done it, we've tried to do, we tried to, you know, do a good job. And now we're doing it with all of our stations, so that as our ridership does come back, it's, we have a refreshed, refreshed outlook for them because we're, we want to make sure they understand it. We want them back and we're going to make sure they see not only what we've seen before, not only the safety aspect of it, but the cleanest of our service, of our service moving forward.
Anybody have questions here? Councilmember Gustafson, and then Councilmember Keeley.
As you're going through these changes, you're talking about our southern areas getting busier, while our downtowns are obviously slowing down because most people aren't working down there anymore. Do you envision bringing in more circular lines throughout the two counties here where we're serving between the cities to move people for jobs and shopping and all that?
I'm, pre-COVID, I've always seen, I've always personally felt, and me and Erin talk about this frequently, a need for looking at some circular service. And that was one of the, that was one of the impetus of why we wanted to do a transit study. We've talked about this transit study now for the past two or three years. It's always been a funding issue, it's never been. So I definitely see now, even with the COVID precipitous need for that in the future, but even prior to that, we, we think there definitely is need for more suburban, suburban, obviously, travel.
Councilmember Keeley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I take this off while I talk?
Yeah.
I can breathe. Thank you. I, I just want to compliment our executive director. Luther does an outstanding job and has, ever since he took this position a few years back. He gets a lot of support and accolades from the board members and has definitely been a very strong, confident leader through this entire COVID challenge. That, as, as he noted, we're currently 10% of, of express. I think at one point it was 4% at the bottom. So my compliments to all the work that you do. It's a pleasure to serve on that board with you and the other board members. And we have a lot of things to talk about these days, COVID being probably first and foremost. But there are other challenges that we have as an opt-out organization, depending on Met Council for our funding. And so we're, we're having some, some good conversations, hopefully productive conversations to, to help that get along and, and make sure that we can position ourselves as a transit organization to meet the needs of tomorrow's riders, which it's pretty clear by the numbers, as Luther alluded to, local service is still holding very strongly and will only get better as we come out of the, the COVID impact to our economy. And we may find that that express in the downtown doesn't get back to those levels for a very long time. But I'm really excited about our innovation with the MVTA Connect, the on-demand service, basically the Uber bus, as I'll call it. And I'm excited about the expansion of that. And I think that's quite frankly where the majority of our growth is really going to happen. Because in, in the future, with less express riders and more people needing to go from point A to point B, you really can't establish a grid of routes that's going to meet everyone's needs. And so, you know, on-demand, point-to-point service is really the ideal solution. So anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate the, the presentation and definitely appreciate working with you, Luther.
Councilmember Schill.
I was very happy to hear you outline the selfie contest that you're going to be doing. I think anytime that government can engage residents and encourage them through, you know, like voluntary mutually beneficial ways such as that, that's really great to see. I like carrots, not a fan of sticks, so very happy to see that. And happy to see that, you know, that you're making it fun and that kind of thing. So my appreciation to you for that.
Luther, I'm looking at the on-demand and the Connect service. So you did well in the winter months. And then COVID hit, and so it's down. But I see July, you're, you're trending up again. So, and are you saying that Burnsville is the highest use?
Those, those are top destinations. Burnsville has, the impetus of the service in the beginning was that we didn't necessarily have great local service in Savage, it's a little hard to serve Savage. Burnsville does have good, has had some good local service. And understanding that in Savage, the bulk of individuals were coming, were coming to the Burnsville Walmart because there wasn't necessarily any type of Walmart or large retail, or large retail like that in the city, in the city of Savage. So that Burnsville Transit Station and Walmart definitely are the top two, are some of the top locations. Now, whether those individuals are coming out of Burnsville or whether they're coming to Savage, I don't have, I can't drill, I didn't drill it out on, I can drill down, but I don't have that on, on my slide here.
Yeah, not necessary. And this is your beta test. So if it gets successful as you move along, then you'll expand out to the other ones of our, within our authority, the other cities.
Yes.
Okay.
We started with, they gave us, we worked with a really great company and we looked at three different, they provided three different service models, three different areas we could look at. And the first one, we seen the most need was Savage and the Western Burnsville side. Apple Valley and Rosemont, Apple Valley and Rosemont were our last, were our last ones. They actually had a little tail, they thought, actually in Shakopee due to all the, all the, all of the, obviously, the, the manufacturing that was happening there as well. But we started, obviously, with Western, that was number one. Now we're going over to Rosemont. And happy about that because it gets us back to serving DCTC. And that's been our, and that's been our corridor. My, you know, my, my commitment is to continue to grow and work on that corridor. And that's our only community college in our service area. And I believe that we should serve, we should serve it.
Well, that's always been a challenge because there's always been a need to have service to the technical college. But there wasn't enough ridership because the subsidy was so high to even have one bus with three or four people on it. And so it wasn't cost-effective and it wouldn't pencil out when I was on the board. So this will help.
Hopefully.
If, if, you know, we continue and it becomes a very successful service. So that'll help with some of those demands. But you don't have to have a whole bus taking it. Yeah. So I think Councilmember Keeley might have talked to you about one of our residents who does, you know, they don't have a smartphone, so they couldn't get the app. So I'm sure you've heard from others. So is there a way that this can be done on a laptop or a computer? Is, is that some technology that you're working on now? So some of our residents who don't have a smartphone can access the service?
Definitely can be done on a computer. So it can definitely, a computer or a smartphone. The only thing we did not roll out for this particular service is we don't take phone reservations for it. And that was, but both electronic, both electronic medias, I mean, is working. We did have a conversation, and that was a cost-effective component to it. Every time you have to have an operator, you normally have to, obviously, our current Flex Route service, even though we didn't get that many reservations, we still had to book that and, and do the input there. This takes, it's automated, takes the automation out. And that's where you get that true efficiency and the cost savings from. But we do, but one good thing about this particular service is too, is that you can flag the bus down as well. So that was something that, so if you did see the bus and you didn't put a reservation, you do have the ability, obviously, to flag it down and explain that the way it sits, either at Burnsville Transit Station, or sometimes it's at Savage, Savage Station as well, their, their hub. So we didn't, I can't say we were on 100% agreement. I think, I think the individual may have also had some challenges with using a computer as well, but there is the computer option.
Okay, good. Councilmember Workman.
Thank you, this was very informative. I just, and this isn't intended to be a political question by any means, but it sounded like you had to pull teeth to get 2.8 million to get a bus garage that needed a lot of help for the FTA. And I just saw the other day that Metro Transit got almost a billion dollars grant for the Southwest Light Rail. Southwest Light Rail. So how, I, obviously it's a smaller organization, but.
Two different funding.
Is it two different funding? I guess my, my bigger question was, is how are, is it a competition with them or is it symbiotic or is it apples and oranges really?
That's a quick question. When it comes to the bus facilities grants, it is a competition from any, any entity that applies for it. So what ends up happening is, I think, and I have the numbers, there were almost $500 million was awarded in that, in this last go-around, but it's about $2.5 billion of actual requests because so many transits in the state is in a, in a state of good repair. There has been, so we have, and Met, the council did do a match for us for our application so we could receive some funding. I do think as we move forward from a regional perspective and how we say may utilize our funds that we procure buses with, I know the council's had some, as Metro Transit was able to do some, extend the life of their buses and use that funding to build Haywood Two, expand Haywood Two. That option wasn't necessarily available to MBTA. We couldn't, you know, we couldn't extend the life for a bus and then take that funding and, and, and obviously repair Burnsville Bus Garage. Had it been available, we probably would have been a lot further along and not been in this competition for the last four to five years. But for the most part, we're just partners unless we both compete for the same funding through the, through the FTA side.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Really, thank you so much for coming in. Really appreciate it. And I think this is good because our residents are watching and we have a lot of bus riders. And so, yeah. So thank you so much. We really appreciate it when we can put this on TV and they can go back and stream it. And when they ask questions, we can always direct them to hear your report.
No problem. How many thoughts?
Thank you so much. Yeah. Okay, we'll move on to our next item. The next item is the Dakota Broadband Board update, and this is an update, and Tom Venables, our IT Director, is presenting.
Put some juice on. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for having me tonight to discuss a continuation of DBB discussions as a follow-up to our June 9th work session. And I am solo tonight. Executive Director Kara Coke is on a family vacation this week, so she was unable to attend. So if there are any questions that I cannot answer that are more specific to her realm, I'll defer those to her and do some follow-up with you. As your background indicated, following the, the June 9th work session, the council direction from the June 9th was to provide some additional overview, information and feedback about the Internet Service Provider Presentations that occurred over the past three months to the DBB Board. You wanted to learn some more information about what they had to say about the services, and we'll go over that a little bit tonight, and I'll dive in just a little bit. The presentation links to all their presentations were in the background. And we'll discuss a continuation of the IRU agreement changes and what's occurred since the June 9th meeting. And then the DBB Systems Plan Update and what's occurred with that. You had asked for all three of those items. As it relates to the Internet Service Provider Presentations that started on the June 10th DBB meeting, we went through five service providers since June 10th and two other organizations. And I'll briefly talk about each of those. The service providers were a variety of providers in Dakota County currently that provide a different level of services and have some different, different involvement in, in partnerships and, and activities throughout the county.
Do all of them have infrastructure as well as content or are they all content-based?
In terms of the service providers, infrastructure and most of them are providing content services today in the county. The other two organizations are bodies that either represent the service providers or help in the policy and the procedural process as it relates to broadband. And that's where I'll start tonight. Our first one that presented in June 10th was the Minnesota Office of Broadband Development, which is also part of the DED Office at the state. That organization, actually, in their back, in their presentation, they provided a timeline of where they've come from. And I highlighted in this slide essentially when the Office of Broadband Development was created in 2013 by law. And they've existed since 2013 to represent the state's policy and help along the state in their process as it relates to broadband governance and the broadband task force that the previous governors and the current governor have appointed. As it relates to the Minnesota Office of Broadband Development, their role and responsibilities really are in these bulleted lists as they, and they don't produce a service or a product per se, they just provide support and information to organizations like cities, municipalities, nonprofits that are interested in receiving broadband funding, broadband grants.
Yeah.
Also that need help to solicit broadband activities or projects and need some resources. So they really do play that role to promote and improve broadband infrastructure development. They also do provide updated mapping data, and that's one of the things that they did provide at their presentation, is some detailed mapping as it relates to broadband service throughout the state of Minnesota. They also support the concept of DIGWAN's right-of-way permitting, policy-related issues that cities may turn to them for guidance and support on or other organizations may. I'm not going to go through every single one of these, but they did provide a comprehensive listing of those types of activities and, and items that each of these bullet points represent. Most of each of the providers, and I'll just back up a little bit, also did talk about their response or involvement in COVID-19 and some of the feedback as it relates to COVID-19 and broadband and what the impact has been on broadband services. As it relates to the Minnesota Office of Broadband Development, they indicated that there is definitely, COVID-19 highlighted the need for good broadband. They specifically talked about the upload speeds, speeds increasing, increasingly being important. As they categorized it, they said download speeds are the consumption, upload speeds are for production. And so overall, what they indicated is service providers did ramp up and they did, were able to bring out and upgrade and address the upload speed needs during the COVID activities, especially early on as it started out in March and April as work from home really ramped Next, Charter presented in the same meeting, excuse me, at the following DBB meeting in July. Charter was one of the first service providers to present. They talked about their overall coverage in Dakota County. As you can see, they represent Apple Valley, Lakeville, and Rosemont and Farmington are their territories in those areas. They talked about some of the demographics of what they provide currently in this area. They've got about 305 miles of fiber, 1,260 miles of coaxial cable. They pass 60,000 homes. Doesn't necessarily mean they serve 60,000 homes, but they do pass by 60,000 homes that are potential customers. And then they have.
Their fibers are lit?
They typically are utilizing fiber, lit fiber services, but they, they use a combination of fiber and coaxial cable, leveraging the coaxial cable that's been in the ground for many years. And then they have local employees that live within Dakota County. Their typical minimum speeds that they provide, that they reported to the DBB are 200 megabits down, 10 megabits up, up to 940 megabits download speeds to 35 megabits, which they considered their gigabit connection. So if you hear them saying they provide gigabit service, it's related to that 940 megabit down and 35 up. Typically, that's a residential service that they're offering. They do have business class services too that are separate and do offer different levels of service.
It's really interesting. I'm looking at this map and they're in Burnsville and I've never heard a charter in Burnsville.
I didn't ask specifically what that presence in Burnsville was, but based on the, the object there, it looks like they must have fiber coming through Burnsville to connect to another service provider somewhere.
Yeah.
But we could follow up and find out specifically what they have in Burnsville.
Yeah, because if they have fiber in Burnsville and they're, if they're using it as I or C net, that.
Most likely they are providing a connection or getting a connection from others, another service provider that's maybe in Burnsville.
Yeah.
And delivering service through their organization and their footprint. They do provide mobile wireless services, so they are a mobile wireless company. Their enterprise services, as I mentioned before, offers up to 10 gigabit symmetrical service over fiber typically. And they are also involved in public-private partnerships, which they, they did discuss and they got into. Specifically, they've had some partnerships with Dakota County and they leverage Dakota County fiber and funding to, to deliver in unserved, underserved areas south, in southern rural Dakota County. They also received border-to-border grant through the Minnesota Office of Broadband that, that was able to allow them to build out their fiber network to an underserved area of Dakota County. That involved the state of Minnesota, Dakota County, and Charter. They also discussed COVID-19, their COVID-19 response, very similar to what the Minnesota Office of Broadband also indicated. They ramped up during the early periods, they were able to accommodate that, that ramp up, and they continue to accommodate the services that are being demanded of their At that same meeting in July, Velocity Telephone, and also known as Gigabit Minnesota, presented. Velocity Telephone is a telephone service provider. They are also a voice and video and data provider. They built out, they tend to build out fiber now to residential areas and they also build out fiber to multi-dwelling units. And they focused on what they do within Dakota County, obviously. They're what they consider 100% fiber-based network. So when they build out or they utilize fiber from others, they're utilizing fiber optic cable specifically.
So they partner with those who have fiber in the ground already?
They do. That's been part of their business model early on, and they also formed that company called Gigabit Minnesota to start building out their own fiber where they could too. So they do both.
So they ride on the infrastructure that's already in the ground?
They do.
Okay.
Velocity, you may have heard in the past because they're a customer of the Access Egan Network, and so they do purchase fiber infrastructure from the city of Egan. They've also approached the city of Burnsville in the past and have shown some interest in leveraging city, city fiber. They discussed their goals as a company. They want to provide gigabits internet for all users that they serve. They want to provide fiber throughout Dakota County wherever they're serving their customers. They want to also develop low-cost rollouts. And what they mean by that is where they can partner with others to leverage other infrastructure, they're going to take advantage of that where they can. And they want to expand every new development area. They call it greenfield development areas, and really that's their focus right now. That's what Gigabit Minnesota is doing, a lot of activity in the Rosemont-Farmington area where there's a lot of new development right now. So they're building out fiber to the premise in many areas. They were also the group that has, owns the fiber to the premise, to homes in the Evermore Development in Rosemont.
I was just going to say because they came out, and Evermore was the first development back in the.
It was in the 90s.
In the 90s, late 90s, early 2000s?
Early 2000s. And they, they deliver voice, video and data services today. So they're a cable television provider to the Evermore Development Group, and they're providing video and voice services to, or data services there too. And they want to continue to do that model where they can, where it makes sense that their most popular internet package is very similar to the Charter package that I mentioned earlier. It is 250 down, 20 up. It is fiber-based. Their entry cost to do that is $40 a month for, for the customer, so reasonable rate. They serve many types of customers, and as I indicated earlier, they're really focused on multi-tenant dwellings currently where they can expand quickly and, and gain a lot of customer base.
Elizabeth, can I ask a quick question?
Oh, yes.
Can you, can you explain to the listening audience what the down and up means when you talk about those speeds?
Sure.
And.
Most internet providers provide two, two types of speeds when they provide you internet service. There's a download speed, so when you're consuming items from the internet, downloading items, watching Netflix or watching other streaming services, that's typically a download service. An upload service is when you are sending files or data to other locations or other third parties. So that would be the upload speed or the second number that I mentioned. And typically that is an, an item that's needed during work-from-home type of activities so that you can upload information or access information quickly to that location you're trying to get to from your home. And so in general, most of the internet service providers today deliver a higher-speed download, higher download speed, excuse me, and a lower upload speed. It allows them to manage their bandwidth a little bit easier because there's not as much demand on the upload side, although that's changing, obviously as a result of COVID and work-from-home activities. Dakota County is their home turf as it relates to Velocity, so they really focus on activity in Dakota County. They've been a business partner with Dakota County also. They currently do leverage Dakota County fiber assets today, not city fiber assets, but the, the county's fiber assets, with the goals of continuing to work together on other projects in the future as they develop, as they push out into other areas of the, the county. So their business model is, is somewhat open in terms of what they want to do, and they leverage a lot of other third-party infrastructure to accomplish what they want to do. And the last presentation at that July 8th meeting was also from a similar type of organization to Velocity. It's high-waft of broadband communications. HBC is they, they go by typically. They actually were born out of the Winona area of Minnesota many years ago in the, in the 90s as a telephone service, but they built out a internet service and started rolling out fiber optic infrastructure in that area to the, the local community, the hospitals, the educational institutions, and then built upon that to become more of a private service provider. Their mission, as it's listed here, is to enhance and enrich lives of those they serve. They've continued to expand into the Dakota County area recently, but as you can see with the, the map there, they're in the southern, southeast portion of Minnesota for the most part, but they have a fairly extensive reach out to the west now, going out past, I believe it's Gaylord area, even further past that Redwood Falls area. And they continue to expand. They are also a triple-play server, a service provider, so they provide voice, video and data services. They do provide wireless broadband services too, so fixed wireless. So fixed wireless is typically site-to-site type of wireless service. Where that becomes very popular is in rural areas where maybe a farmer out in the middle of nowhere just needs internet service and it's tough to get infrastructure out to that location. They may put up a site-to-site wireless connector or connection to get to that location. So they do a combination of things, so that makes them somewhat unique in terms of a service provider. They've been in the business for over 23 years in the, in this area. They do want to provide residential and business services and they continue to expand. And they do provide fiber to the premise, fiber to the home type of services. And as you can see there, it is, they're wireless broadband. Also, they can deliver at different speeds of 25, 50 and 100 megabits, so pretty substantial service as it relates to fixed wireless. Councilmember Gustafson.
Can you explain how wireless works? What's needed for wireless to work?
Yeah.
So fixed wireless broadband typically needs a backhaul service in order to get from point A to point B. Point A might be the wireless antenna on the farmer's home. Point B is the wireless receiver that's connecting to the service provider, which is in this case, HBC. In order to get that signal they capture back to their main network, they generally connect that wireless receiver to fiber optic cable. So in most cases, fiber is a complimentary service to any wireless service provider. And when we talk about wireless cellular communications like 4G or 5G services, all, most of those towers that you see in, within the communities, specifically within Burnsville, all have fiber backhauls to them through some fiber backhaul provider.
They have to come back down and go into that fiber to get out.
Yep. And in at least a couple cases, we as a city are providing fiber backhaul services to service providers that are our water tower sites to provide, to their tenants who, who are wireless cellular service customers. So it, it, it's a partnership, it's a cohesive type of arrangement. HBC also discussed what their involvement is in the community. They also did talk about their partnerships with Dakota County. They currently also lease fiber from Dakota County. They currently also lease fiber from Dakota County in the areas of rural Dakota County to get into the northern areas of Dakota County. So they've got some partnerships with the county in place today. And they continue to expect that kind of growth going forward, as they want to continue to expand their reach into the southern areas of Minnesota. Our following meeting in August, on the August twelfth meeting, we had Comcast and the Minnesota Cable Communications Association present very similar conversations. Comcast went through their overview of their demographics as a company, as it relates to Minnesota, but they also talked about their national presence too. In Dakota County specifically, they had some statistics or information related to the homes passed, as Charter did. They passed one hundred and eight thousand three hundred and thirty homes. They have one hundred and sixty-four employees in Dakota County. They connect up to fifty-six hundred and eighty-one business customers in Dakota County currently. And they provide a gig service, and they call it a gig service, very similar to Charter in the sense that it's a, can be a gigabit download speeds, but it's a lower-speed upload, so very similar in that regard. And then they also focused on their Xfinity services. So Xfinity is their services that deliver voice, video, and data applications and services to the homes and businesses. But in addition to that, they're also branding their mobile wireless service as Xfinity. They provide Wi-Fi service now too, in many areas. They also do home security now, and brand it as Xfinity Service. So if you're an Xfinity customer, you can have home alarm service through Comcast, and then remote voice command services too, with those fancy new remotes that they have. They talked about their local and state impact overall. They pay in one hundred and twenty-nine million in state taxes, fees, and permits overall annually. This is from 2019. And one point two billion in tech and infrastructure since 2011, so that's their investment in Minnesota. And then they also paid in two point eight million in franchise fees in 2019 in Dakota County. And the franchise fees are the fees that they collect from the customers on behalf of the local franchises. And then they also talked about their COVID-19 response. Again, very consistent with what you've already heard and what we were told from the other providers, that they were able to ramp up very quickly during that early part of the COVID activity. They were able to respond to it with no problems, and they continue to be able to respond to that during the ongoing activities with COVID. They are, as a company, trying to become a one-stop shop, so that you, as a customer, if you're a business customer or a residential customer, can buy a lot of services from them and just work through them and not worry about getting your phone from somebody else, your, your video from somebody else, or your data, and then all those other services I talked about with Xfinity. They also are considered, at least, they indicated they're the largest converged IP network nationwide that can scale up to a hundred gigabit service. So that's a lot of words, but it, they have got a large presence throughout the country, fiber optic connectivity through multiple states, and so they deliver services throughout the country and not just in Minnesota. And their network capacity does, according to Comcast, doubles every eighteen to twenty-four months. So their ability to deliver faster, bigger broadband service through their existing network doubles every eighteen to twenty-four months. And I didn't indicate it earlier, but the map I have on the, on the screen shows the Comcast territories currently in Dakota County, obviously Burnsville, Eagan, West St. Paul, South St. Paul, Mendota Heights, and Hastings. I cannot read, I might be missing somebody. I think I got everybody in there. But that is their current footprint in Dakota County as far as the services. They don't currently offer or provide services outside of those territories. And then also at that August twelfth meeting, we had Anna Boroff, who is, I believe, in the audience tonight, and she can probably speak to any questions you may have better than I can regarding her presentation. She, very similar, talked about who her organization represents. They represent all the cable companies within Minnesota, or at least these cable companies listed here in Minnesota, who provide core technologies as it relates to data, voice, and video. They serve currently nine hundred thousand Minnesota households in total. They have four thousand Minnesota employees. There's about twenty thousand miles of cable in Minnesota alone, and they provide about thirty-six thousand jobs in Minnesota as an association. And then there's, they deliver about five point four billion in economic impact. They also, she also discussed the impact COVID had during the time. And I did provide some information that she was able to provide in the presentation as it relates to downstream growth or download growth during COVID. So they saw a nine point nine percent download growth since March first, and they saw a twenty-five point seven percent upstream growth. So again, that relates to our download speeds, upload speeds discussion earlier, so definitely consistent with what we've been hearing from the other providers. She went through and provided an overview of the community involvement. Each of the companies her association represents have with each of their communities, and also talked about how Dakota County is ranked as it relates to broadband availability. It's number seven in Minnesota. And then she provided some additional statistics related to how, how much is served in Minnesota based on the state's goal of twenty-five, those numbers are, so the state has a broadband goal by 2022 of having service providers deliver twenty-five meg download and three meg upload at a minimum. So in order to be considered a broadband service provider, you would have to meet those minimums. That's the state's goal right now, and according to Anna, the, these companies, the companies in the association are meeting ninety-eight point three one percent of that served today. And then, as it relates to the state's 2026 goal of a hundred meg download speeds and twenty meg uploads, they're already meeting ninety-seven point five, fifty-six percent of that today. So, and then there's additional goals downstream in later years that the state has set. We did not talk about that. So in general, very consistent conversations with the service providers and the organizations so far at this point. With that, I'll pause if you do have any questions for Anna.
Okay. Any questions for Anna? And welcome, Anna. It's good to see you.
Hi. You did a good job.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Great.
I have a question for Tom.
Sure.
Councilmember Workman?
Thank you. Was there a reason why CenturyLink or Frontier didn't present as part of this? Just as having a presence in Burnsville and providing these services as well?
As far as I understand, Anna, or excuse me, Cara reached out to them but did not receive a response from them to present.
Okay.
And then the last presentation that we had at our most recent DBB meeting was from Arvig. Arvig, you may not have heard that name in the past, but they're a growing company also in Minnesota, and they are a Minnesota company. They've worked with us as a city in the past, and they continue to work with others in Dakota County. They deliver fiber infrastructure. They deliver dark and lit services. They construct fiber. They are also a triple-play service provider in some communities. So they provide voice, video, and data services in some of the communities they serve today. They are also a residential and business service provider. So they're involved in quite a few other activities outside of the normal service provider activities that we may have discussed from some of the other service providers. They, they do provide locating services for fiber, so when you do a go-for-one call, they're one of those companies that'll go out and locate the infrastructure, the utilities. They also provide public-private partnerships, so, and we've worked with them in the past in some of our activities. Dakota County is currently working with them and has worked with them in the past. They also deliver services to their own employees. They have nine hundred employees in Minnesota. And then they also own very, several, many diverse companies. So as they've grown out their own company, they've realized the need to either partner with other companies or build, or create their own companies. And what I mean by that, they have a list, I think, of at least seven different companies that they've created that they utilize as they deliver services in the different communities, one of those being a engineering service, or company, that provides engineering services for, civil engineering services for designing fiber build-outs. Locate service, that I mentioned already. They also have a media company. They deliver media services and communication, similar to like an AE2S. They are also a company that delivers specific multi-dwelling unit services, so very similar to Velocity Gigabit Minnesota. They are also present in fourteen different data centers throughout Minnesota, so that provides them a very large reach into the rest of the state. As you can see by their fiber map there, it's a little blurry, but it does indicate where all their fiber infrastructure currently is throughout the state, with a fairly large concentration in the metropolitan area. And then during their discussion, they did have one question for the DBB, is how can we work together to continue to expand our services and our infrastructure throughout the county? And as they indicated, they are, they, as part of their business model is to leverage third-party fiber infrastructure. They also build their own fiber infrastructure where needed, but they also realize that if there's fiber available that they can leverage, they're open to doing that.
Very good.
That was the end of the, the provider presentations that we heard from. Are there any other follow-up questions regarding that?
No, it was, this is very good, because I was really interested in understanding all of the different companies and how they're working within Dakota County. And I'm pleased to hear that a lot of them are looking to collaborate, to work with the cities and the county with the infrastructure that some of us already have in the ground. And I remember Arvig, when they came through, they were, you know, they would use our fiber.
Arvig has approached us in the past in some of the routes that we have in the, in the city, where they've inquired at least into some of the fiber, and in at least two occasions, they've decided not to use city infrastructure.
Was that when we went with Frontier to do content, for them to do the content? Because we always have said, we'll build the infrastructure, but we're not getting into the content business, because that's not our wheelhouse.
No, the examples that I can recall regarding Arvig were when they pulled permits to bring in their own fiber in Burnsville. We identified that Burnsville already had fiber within those routes that they were interested in. And at that point, it was a little bit late in their process. They had already done all their engineering and design work and were ready to start rolling with their own fiber build-out. So we would just have been slowing them down in order to sit down with them and come to some agreement. So they decided to not pursue that city fiber at that time.
Councilmember Keely.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I thought the executive director would be here tonight, so are you comfortable fielding some questions?
I will try, and if I need to, I will defer to her and follow up with you.
Well, I
And we have councilmember Gustafson, who's our liaison also.
And I'm sure he'll chime in as well. I want to, I want to back up, because we've had multiple discussions about the DBB, and I think we've made clear a lot of our opinions and perspectives, and we still don't have a separate IRU for an INET or CNET, and until we see that, I'm not going to support going forward with it. In fact, I suggested that maybe we should consider pulling out of it, but set that aside. Can you articulate, what's the end goal for the DBB? What is the, what are they, what is that entity trying to achieve specifically?
The DBB essentially was formed to help manage the city's assets that are members to leverage the, the assets that the city's either owned currently or that they're going to build out for future projects, and help collectively manage that and leverage benefits by scale and by group. And then leverage those assets that are unused for other third-party uses that could benefit the communities as it relates to economic development or other activities that otherwise would promote broadband services within the communities. That was the original intent of the DBB, as it was started out back in 2013, 2014 timeframe as it came out of that. It really was born out of that HIP initiative, High-Impact Partnerships, and the, the intent at that time by the cities was to start leveraging that capacity that was available and a lot of the fiber that existing cities owned. And many of us, like in our case, we had implemented fiber as part of a water utility project in 2009. It did what it was intended to do. It connected our facilities. We leveraged it, but we also had excess fiber capacity then that could be leveraged for other uses and third parties. And the city at that time decided to pursue that activity. During that timeframe too, though, and as other cities did similar activities, we all experienced very similar things. We were all doing the same thing, but collectively, separately using our own resources to do those things. And similar to what the DCC model was, is collectively combining resources to help standardize and bring forward very similar initiatives countywide, and then try to collectively manage and market that if possible. Now, I didn't dive deep, and I didn't get into a lot of details, but that's essentially at a high level what the DBB was born out of, with the intent to save time and resources and money going forward to build out institutional network uses for our own operations and make sure that that becomes efficient and effective and affordable. But then, again, leverage any excess capacity in that to help third parties use it, but not become a service provider, but provide infrastructure for service providers to deliver other services to the communities.
Well, I hear the overriding message was efficiency. I mean, touched on economic development, but ultimately, most of what you just said, and I remember those discussions back then, that led up to the 2012, 2013, like they started in 2010 or 11, or maybe even earlier, but obviously, things were quite different in the marketplace back then. But, but I hear you say efficiency. I mean, let's, we're all doing this, let's do this collectively and save money, kind of like the DCC model. How much is the city taxpayers saving by being a member on an annual basis, by being a member of the DBB?
On some specific items, I can provide you some savings. As a whole, we didn't add any staff in order to continue on with our fiber activity projects. And so that our, our costs joining the DBB initially increased our expenses, but with the hope that as we start leveraging, offsetting revenue gained by any kind of third-party activities using those assets, that that would defer or defray the expenses that have increased. To give you one specific example, the city, prior to being a DBB member, had our own fiber locate costs that we had to pay, pay out to a contractor to do our go-for-one locates for our fiber infrastructure on an annual basis. That, that cost the city at that time approximately forty-five thousand dollars a year. When we joined the DBB, our current costs just for locates have gone down to about thirty-six thousand. That's our expenditure now for locate costs. We were able to do that as a collective, because we could negotiate a contract that was much larger as an organization. That's one specific item I can cite. We also had incidental costs that we would have to collect as it relates to engineering fees. So when we have a fiber project, we hire an engineering firm to design the fiber extension and the fiber activity, and each project has an associated cost with it. Today, instead of having a cost per project, we, we pay into the DBB, and that covers all of our engineering costs for projects that we're currently engaged in or future projects that we're involved in. And then we also have costs associated with covering our insurance on the activity with our, our fiber. So as a whole, our, our overall costs may have gone up initially with the intent that any third-party revenue coming in could offset that. And as it relates to the revenue we currently have from leases that were already existing using our fiber assets, the city has about twenty-five thousand dollars annually in revenue that we bring in to offset our expenses from our assets that were already leasing out prior to the DBB even being in place.
Maybe I should, if I may ask, City Manager Melanie Lee, what is, based on your budgeting numbers, the annual savings to the city of Burnsville by being a part of the DBB currently today? today?
Councilmember Mayor, Councilmember, I think Tom captured some of the key components, the staff costs, not having somebody to manage the fiber is a cost that we don't realize. So that's a savings. I, I haven't done the analysis, but I would say it's the range of, what do you say, Tom? $10,000, $15,000 from that perspective?
At least that much. The other thing that it provides us is the incidental unpredictable costs that come up in general annually, breaks and fixes. So when a backhoe cuts the fiber, those are typically things that aren't necessarily budgeted for. And the DBB covers the expense of moving on those activities and taking that on for us without any staff time and involvement, whereas in the past, staff would have to be involved in, in dealing with those activities. Now we can just hand off those activities. The other type of incidental savings in terms of time is examples of when there are third parties interested in city assets, those fiber assets, where we can just pass that off to the DBB staff to take that on. And more, a more recent one is MVTA. They've got an interest in leveraging some city fiber assets to provide another internet path to their bus garage here in Burnsville. I took a call and I was able then to pass them along to the DBB and the DBB is handling it all from there and providing them the engineering services on our behalf and managing that process and that piece of it for us. So that's time that I'm not having to spend on that, that I can then serve into other activities here at the organization. So some of that is soft cost savings, some of it's not as tangible savings that we can identify in a budget, but it definitely, those incidental type of savings are realized through the DBB. And we've had quite a few of those in the last couple of years.
Thank you. It's, so I, when we look at what are we getting, we're getting some efficiency of 10 or 15,000 plus some of those incidental things that you can't really predict miscellaneous costs. And in exchange for that savings, which is, I mean, it's savings, it just isn't very substantial. I don't know what, how it compares to our DCC savings. But, so I look at, there's the benefit side, there's some conveniences that you could put in there. What's the cost to us? What, in other words, what's the intangible costs and the hard costs? I know that I saw the memo that we're going to save maybe $900 a year because other cities are adding fiber, so our costs lessened a little bit. It's over $100,000 for, for next year. But what else are we giving up? In other words, what else are we paying? Right? We're giving up control, we're signing a 20-year contract or requested to sign a 20-year contract, we're still accepting liability, right? We give up significant amount of control of turning the fiber over to the DBB. So when, when you, when you start looking at that IRU and the sort of, in my opinion, the heavy weight that we're in cost of all of those factors and intangibles for a savings of $10,000 or $15,000 a year, it's kind of a lopsided scale. It might have some great conveniences, but I don't see the payback. I don't see the ROI on giving up all of that for a measly $10,000 to $12,000 a year savings. That's, we're giving up a lot. I mean, it's, I put a lot of value, put it that way personally, I'm not speaking on behalf of anybody else here, but I put a lot of value on giving up control of that asset, giving up a certain amount of voting control, giving up in a contract situation, having the kind of requirements that that contract IRU is demanding. It's a lot of cost. In other words, I just look at it, is this a fair deal for Burnsville? And it does not seem like it's anywhere near a fair, a fair deal from my perspective. And I don't know if any one of us, if this was our own business, would we, for a savings of that much a year, give up all of those factors and controls? So I think that's maybe something we have to ask ourselves. So the, the other thing I just wanted to ask you, you're in the tech industry, right? You follow this stuff. I, I do because I'm a tech junkie from a long time ago and I just love technology, so I follow it very closely. Back in 2010, 2011, when we started these discussions, what was the broadband speed availability, generally speaking, in the city of Burnsville?
As it relates to city operations, we were providing our own broadband speeds. We were doing gigabit services back in 2009, 2011. Today, we're doing 10 gigabit services between our facilities.
Right.
Using our own dark fiber infrastructure. In terms of the community.
Right, the marketplace.
The marketplace. Much different landscape, obviously. There was much less quality service and services available as it relates to the broadband speeds they have today. If I recall 10 years ago what those were, they may have been 20 megabit service, maybe 10 megabit. It varied widely.
Yes.
And depending on where, what service provider. DSL was a very popular service back then and DSL typically served about five to seven megabit.
Yeah.
And, and so it's a very different landscape, definitely, but also the applications and uses of broadband have changed drastically and the types of application demands and the streaming services and the online services that are demanded have changed quite a bit. Work from home wasn't even really a concept back in 2010, 2009.
Only for self-employed who can dictate.
Only for techies who were working at home with their dial-up modems.
Programmers.
Yeah.
Exactly. 56K was still prevalent back then. So, so you did a great job articulating what was back then and that was really the genesis in the discussion that we were having as a city in considering what we ultimately did and chose to do back then very, very delicately and very thoughtfully and very carefully and not without a lot of consternation to sell at a wholesale level some dark fiber, of our excess dark fiber. That was well before, you know, fast forward, the marketplace for, just as you pointed out, primarily the soho market versus the business market drove the speeds to what they are today. And the businesses ended up just sort of going along for a ride and getting the biggest benefit out of it. It was the businesses and homes back then, I mean, who, who loved 56K dial-up or who loved, you know, three meg? I mean, that, that was kind of big 10 years ago, if you could get three meg download, that was huge. We're talking smaller numbers, right? So the whole world has changed from the spirit of why the DBB was even created and discussed as part of that HIP thing from 10 years ago. And, and so one of my comments about this whole DBB debate has been, this seems like a solution that's surfacing about seven to 10 years late for what it's thinking about doing or what we might want to think about it doing from a competitive standpoint, getting into the private sector business, bringing competition in, upping the speeds. Because the private sector has responded phenomenally because of the video download demands to the point where I haven't heard anybody say, I'm disappointed with the speeds I have. I mean, I'm sure there's somebody in Burnsville saying, a gig is not fast enough, I need better than that, right? Or maybe they need a gig download and they need maybe, you know, 100 meg upload, right? Because their, that, their business nature is such like that, but not very often. Certainly the Egan's example, the Egan, I'll call it the Egan experiment that cost them a few million bucks, they went into this on their own and they found that there was, there was no market demand for, for that kind of thing because the private sector had fulfilled that market need. So they learned a powerful and expensive lesson as well. So I, I'm still going back saying, why are we in this? Why is the DBB existing today? Because for Burnsville, we've already, the problem has gone away. But for rural parts of Dakota County, this problem is very present and, and, and obvious in a lot of parts of the rural, you know, areas of Dakota County. And so in any kind of discussion where we might say, would we, or be asked, would we be interested in making our fiber loop available if it were going to help under or unserved areas? Certainly if it can, I don't know how it can and why we'd need to loop all the way to us and back out there, but, but maybe there's a solution there. But for Burnsville, there's the solution, it's like a solution in search of a problem. We, the problem left us five plus years ago. And so I, I still question why we're spending so much time, spending so much money for a 15, $10,000 or $15,000 savings on something which that IRU has so many things that are too costly in my mind for us. And just how can we help the DBB focus their attention on the under and unserved areas? Because that's really where all the attention should be, just like it was 10 years ago. In Burnsville in 10 years ago, 10 years ago, we did have some underserved areas and some underserved needs. We had businesses that were speaking out, wasn't, we weren't getting 25, 50 a month. It was sporadic, but it existed, right? Those are the vocal people saying, I just can't get the speed I need to drive my, you know, to support my business needs. And those, those calls have all just disappeared. And so how do we, how do we help the DBB help the unserved areas and stop focusing and spending so much time trying to find a solution to Burnsville's, you know, because we don't have that issue anymore. And so that's kind of where I'm coming from is maybe there is a place for the DBB, but certainly there's no need for an IRU in my eyes for a CNET here. But I do want to support the INET and I think we all said we want to support that because I think our publicly owned infrastructure, fiber, should be made available to help our publicly owned partners like the school district and the MVTA and other entities like that. Thank you.
Councilmember Gustafson?
A lot to respond to. The benefit we're getting as far as the operations go, it did go down a little bit this year and of course, we're just getting started. And the more fiber is added to the network, the more our costs are going to go down in this and it won't be just a few thousand dollars, it's going to be many, many dollars. One of the things, we keep talking about the CNET as if we're competing and I hear that all the time, and alls we're doing is trying to leverage assets the taxpayers have already paid for and they're sitting dormant in the ground and allowing people like, like Arvick and Velocity and all them to come in. And we already know that the market wants to come in and do this and allow them to lease, lease that from us and take it from there. It costs us nothing for them to light those, those fibers. It costs us nothing for them to go to the door. What we get out of it is a lease charge that we'll get for them using the fiber and that's going to, again, leverage our costs down as far as handling our INET and the whole structure we put in place throughout the county. And I do believe this is economic development as well. I think it will help drive businesses to Dakota County, which was very important to us. When you look at Egan, Egan, yeah, they, they made some mistakes. You know what they did? They lit up their fiber and they put nodes everywhere and it cost them a fortune. It was one of those build it and they will come. That's not what the DBB is doing. Alls we're doing is looking at assets that we already have and are paid for in the ground and, and allowing companies to come in, private companies that want to come in and service the areas. And that's all we're doing. And so I, I don't understand why there's this resistance to letting the market come in and do its thing like they always do. You know, I just heard you saying, I heard it earlier today, nobody in town is asking for higher speed. Well, if that's the case, these companies will do their due diligence and they'll do their marketing and if there's nobody, if there's nobody that wants it, they're not going to lease it from us. But I don't understand why we would not want to have a revenue source that can help us offset the cost of the fiber throughout the county. It just doesn't make sense not to do that, especially in these times when revenue is so important to us in our, in our city.
Okay. Councilmember Workman.
Thank you. I just, I have a point of clarification. I understand that it might not cost money to theoretically flip a switch to turn on a line of fiber, but there's still an ongoing budget for the DBB continually, that's not zero dollars. So there is costs attributed with this that we're going to be participating in. And to your point, Dan G, if people aren't seeking it, and I'm not trying to start a debate here, but if, if people aren't seeking it out, the CNET, and we're going to continue to pay these dues and watch these budget numbers increase year over year over year, then it at some point does start costing money with no return on that investment. And so that's where my problem comes into this is if we're going to continue to contribute and nobody's asking for this, then it seems like we're just throwing money at something that's not materializing. And that's, I think, where my point of contention or confusion is coming in. And I don't know if you want to respond to that, you certainly don't have to, but.
Whenever you're ready.
I, that's, that would be my main question right now.
The, the broadband, Dakota broadband is about managing the system throughout Dakota County. It's about leveraging all of our cities together. So we have a company that's out there that's managing the system, they're taking, they're fixing the system when it needs to be taken care of, they're locating the system, it all happens together as a county, which leverages our costs. So the more people that get on board, the less it's going to cost each city as they, as they do things. The CNET or the dark fiber in my mind is almost like a bonus. We've already paid for it, it's in the ground. It's not like, it's not like we're going to take 100 fibers out and just keep the seven fibers we use. It's in the ground and if someone wants to pay to light that fiber and deliver whatever they want to be, whether it's content to, to the home or a business, or maybe it's a business that's got three different businesses, it wants to hook fiber to for, for their purposes. Why would we not, why would we not already use that? Because we've already paid for it. It costs us no more. And we're going to continue to lay fiber out here because we have to get the whole system together. I mean, that's just going to happen. In Burnsville here, we have very little fiber left to lay. I mean, we're getting pretty close to done as far as later. So we're not going to be, and we don't pay for fiber that other people put in. If West St. Paul wants to put in fiber, they pay for that. That's how it works. We don't pay for any of that. They just, they add that fiber to the network, which helps leverage our cost for our fiber here when, when we're doing the locates and doing the repairs and then the management.
Can I ask one quick follow up question?
Sure, and then I'll go to Keeley.
So I, I understand that the cost to install has already been established, paid for and we've walked from that. So it's in the ground, that's been paid for. Like anything else, the more you use it, the more service that it's going to require, the more upgrading it's going to be needing, you know, the, the costs I don't think are just stagnant. The more that you use it, it doesn't just continue to just stay stable. So I mean, it, I don't know that you can project that just because it's buried in the ground that costs won't go up, that they would go down just because people are using it. And I'm not a fiber scientist by any means, but I would imagine it's like anything else where the more use involved, the more likely it is to break and need to be repaired, which comes with added costs. Now, you're saying that the more companies that would sign on through the CNET would reduce those overall costs because then you're starting to turn a revenue that would in theory then reduce our buy-in costs because then it becomes more reliant on the sale of the fiber rather than the contribution that each city is putting into the DBB.
Yeah, that's just a piece of it. The other piece is the miles that the other cities are putting in, in Dakota County, which helps offset the overall cost of the operation of the fiber throughout Dakota County.
But it also expands our liabilities and the need for those future repairs that Tom talked about.
We carry insurance for that. We, we, DBB carries insurance for that. I mean, that's what, that's what insurance is about.
I don't know anything about insurance.
Well, you should look, you should look it up.
Okay.
I mean, and Tom can give you a lot of the technical reasons why that happens.
I just, I don't, I don't want to, I don't think you can sit here and say without, without, with any certainty that the more we sell, the less the cost will be because I think the broader that this gets, the, the bigger the exposure is to those vulnerabilities in the system and maintenance and so on and so forth.
I think Tom can answer that question.
Tom, do you want to take that before I go to Keeley and Tara?
Councilmembers, as I've presented over the years, one of the things or terms I've used is this is 50-year infrastructure. And typically that means that the fiber itself does not impede in terms of performance, it's the equipment that's hooked up to it on each end. And the DBB today provides the maintenance on the fiber infrastructure only today, not the equipment that's hooked up to it. So the performance of the fiber is going to remain the same over time, even as more customers and more entities utilize that fiber. So the maintenance of that fiber doesn't necessarily increase because it's in the same conduit, it's in the same shape, though you have to take care of it no matter how many customers or how many fibers are in that conduit. But the bandwidth opportunities continue to increase because that's where the equipment is necessary. If you want to increase your speeds, you change the equipment that connects to the fiber. And that's where your costs may increase if you want to continue to increase your speeds. But that's up to the customers and that would be the customer premise equipment.
And they pay.
So the maintenance of the fiber itself, as it relates to budgetary costs, as other members in the DBB add route miles, and that's what we call it, route miles of fiber, the calculation used to determine the budget calculation used to determine the budget for each member depends on how many route miles they have. And because if our route miles are continually similar and don't increase very much, because we don't have very many large projects remaining, um, as other organizations or members increase their projects and continue to build out their fiber, their route miles will increase, and therefore, the, the budgetary impact will actually allow us to see a decrease in our budgets. And we're actually seeing that for the first time in 2021. It's all only a $900 decrease in the proposed budget for the DBB, but it's because of the increase in route miles by the other members that we're seeing an actual decrease. So, if that trend continues, we'll continue to see a decrease in our maintenance through the DBB. It's only a $900 difference in the next year, but we should continue to see that.
Okay. Councilmember Keely?
A couple of questions. Um, what is the additional cost if all of the cities were to sign on for the CNET? Is it just you flip a switch, or what are the, what are the capital costs on top of what we've already invested to be able to actually set up a CNET?
As part of the original systems plan, that was referenced in the original joint powers agreement signed in 2018, it identified CNET gap projects to finish up at that time what was proposed as a CNET network. Um, there were gaps identified within different communities, and I believe there was six total. As of today, there's five of six that have been completed, and the sixth one is in process to be completed to actually finish that original systems plan to address the CNET gaps. So, that's using dollars that were already committed by the members and the membership. Burnsville already addressed that in the first year of our membership, so we don't have any CNET gap projects to complete. Um, the, the CDA, though, also provided seed money, capital purchase money of 300 and, the number escapes me, over $300,000 for the initial CNET startup, as, as I'll call it. That's contingent on updating the, the systems plan, though, that the DBB is currently in the process of, of moving forward on. And the idea behind that, there is some capital dollars set aside by the CDA to be utilized for the membership to create the final design of the CNET. And so, there is no further capital commitment from the existing members today, uh, because of the CDA money that's available until that, um, systems plan is updated. Um, and that's part of the, the, the presentation tonight, and I could talk to, about that a little bit, about where we're at on the, the systems update plan.
Okay. Kara?
Can I, one last question, for, I'm sorry, I had a second one. Who's going to, even if we did this as an INET, who actually is going to be the, the person who would be responsible for repairs? And do we have any sense as to the, like, the response time for outages or issues? Uh, you know, what's the service commitment by, I guess it would be the DBB?
So, that would be up to the DBB to develop those contractors, SOAs, the service level agreements with the potential customers that would leverage the CNET infrastructure, to develop the service level agreements that they would expect for maintenance. Similar to what, um, the city of Burnsville did in the past with our individual agreements with each of the providers that we have agreements with, they were concerned about similar things. Uh, maintenance windows, when are you going to maintain the fiber if it's broken? How long will it take you to fix that fiber? Those items have all been discussed and will all be part of agreements that the DBB would develop and work with the future customers on. Um, we have similar type of agreements in place with the, the fiber maintenance company called MP Next Level. They do our, our fiber locates, but they also do our break-fix activities. And within that agreement that the DBB signed on behalf of the membership, they have to meet cer- certain minimums and certain requirements to make sure that our fiber is, um, resp- any problems with the fiber are responded to in a, a very aggressive timeframe.
Well, that, and we'd all have that concern. I mean, if we, if we were to move forward with just an INET or an INET or a CNET, in both cases, especially with the INET for sure, the school district, MVTA, I mean, we'd all, just as we do, we would highly depend on it. So, timely response to outages would be critical, because we, we'd be affecting our transit provider, we'd be affecting the school district and our own ability to communicate, right? So, that's a key important piece of...
First responders.
And the first responders, yeah, I mean, everybody that's tapping into it, uh, you know, we, we'd want to have a very, very significant, uh, service level delivery contract to make sure that they're addressed very, very quickly.
All of that is, that's very important. There's also another thing that's very important, it's the design of the network, and the design of the institutional network and the, the CNET, uh, if the, the CNET moves forward. And, and again, because you're, you're, when we talk about INET and CNET, we're really talking about the same infrastructure. It's in the same conduit, it's in the same routes for the most part. That's going to be designed in a way that it makes it resilient and redundant, meaning in most cases, the ability to reroute traffic where there is a break can occur if it's designed correctly. In our case, in our institutional network today at Burnsville, we have that ability. We have dual internet connections, we have the ability to reroute traffic. Most of our staffed facilities like City Hall have multiple paths of fiber coming in and out of it. And so, we do take those kind of things into consideration. And again, that, part of that concept and that discussion occurs in the systems plan, and how that design is going to end up to accommodate those types of concerns from any potential customer or user of the INET or the CNET potentially.
Can I just tag on to something you said quick?
And I...
You, you noted, I, I apologize. You noted, it's a good discussion, though, I think it's well worth having. And thank you for being on the hot seat without the executive director here to, to field these questions. So, we're, we're putting you on the spot, and I certainly understand it, but I know you're close to this, so, you've done great. Thank you. Um, the, the debate about, um, whether we can have an INET agreement using this, this pipe of fiber and not a CNET agreement, IRU, on the same pipe of fiber. Describing your pers- your perspect- from your perspective, what's the difference between the fiber itself and then the contracts and policies that govern the traffic, the data traffic on it?
The difference between those two?
Yeah.
Um, the fiber obviously is just infrastructure. It's a material that needs to be maintained, but it also has to be maintained in a way that relates to a contract that's in place either for, uh, customer use or our own organizational use. And so, in, in general, contracts can identify where there needs to be standards in place in the build-out of fiber infrastructure. They can address any concerns about service level, um, issues and maintenance, maintenance windows, as we've indicated, or agreements that third parties may have with their own customers that we have to meet. And so, in most cases, those two pieces are married together in many, in many ways. And again, I can only turn back to what we've done over the last 10 years with our fiber. In many cases, we tried to standardize as much as possible to make sure our, our infrastructure was carrier class, and I use quotes, because we did ask for that design concept back when we, um, brought it forward in 2009, so that it could be considered and then tied to agreements that any carrier or any customer potentially using that infrastructure would, um, feel that we can live up to, to meet their requirements. And that's really where the, the fiber infrastructure and then the agreements really can be tied together so that we can show one relates to the other. Um, it really is an ongoing discussion that we have at the DBB. Uh, as we do this, it's an educational process for many of the DBB members. Um, we've been ahead of the game in terms of where we're at and our experiences. And the concerns that are being talked about tonight are things that have been brought up and are continuing to be discussed, um, as it relates to the IRU. Um, the DBB has recognized that Lakeville, Burnsville, and Dakota County have some issues with the IRU language, um, as it relates to CNET and as it relates to liability. They want to continue that conversation. Nothing has been, um, taken action on at this time. They realize it may take some further discussion, uh, and that's what they're willing to continue to do to address any ongoing concerns. Um, they are looking for additional input. Uh, they want to continue that feedback, uh, with their next meeting. They also want to continue that as the study, um, the systems plan update proceeds, with the anticipation when the, the update is completed, um, and brought back to the DBB for further discussion. They're going to wrap in the IRU conversation, they're going to wrap in the CNET conversation, they're going to have input from stakeholders. Um, the stakeholders being not only the membership, but stakeholders identified as part of the systems plan update, which would mean the businesses, the residents, the schools, healthcare, and potentially other partners, MVTA and others that are leveraging those assets today, or maybe leveraging those assets in the future. So, um, we will continue to have this conversation about the contracts and the service level agreements and what impact. Uh, that has also been something that some of the service providers have raised, concern about guaranteed levels of service, the quality of the infrastructure. But that's also one of the benefits of what the DBB is providing. They're trying to standardize the quality and the, the way that the DBB infrastructure is being built out. Now, we're, again, ahead of the game, because we've already done a lot of build-out, but they're also trying to use us as an example to continue to build out for other members, um, i- in the way that Burnsville has done it over the last several years, and that we'll continue to do it as we build out to other smaller projects that we're going to continue to do. Um, and I'm sorry, I may not have answered your question, but...
You did, you did open a door, because I think you've heard the majority of this council is asking for a separate IRU for the INET and the CNET, and it sounds like that still could happen pending the study and some further discussion.
Yes, that, definitely. Um, I can go through a couple items on my next, the slide that's up right now, just to talk about that to some degree. Um, so, some IRU language...
So, can I go to Kara? She has a question before you get to the IRU discussion.
No, he can go through this slide, and then I'll ask my question. That's fine.
Okay.
Um, some recent IRU language changes were proposed and brought forward at the August DBB meeting. Um, the DBB board as a whole felt that there was further discussion that was needed. It denied some of all the concerns and questions that have been raised in the, in the past several months. Um, it mostly related to the, the, the change in language in the IRU and the JPA to create and codify member, a, a member approval process, um, for use of assets for CNET projects. Basically, giving the member, each individual member, the ability to say yes or no to any use of city assets or member assets for CNET-related projects. But it didn't go far enough in, in terms of what some of the, the three entities were asking. And so, the board recognized that and, and wants to continue the conversation. Um, they also felt that it was necessary to, um, define what the CNET is. That's still a, a, a conversation that's going on, as we are having similar conver- conversations. And what does that end up looking like and being? And that's really what the systems plan update is hopefully going to address, so that, um, some concept of CNET can be understood and what that end goal is going to be. Um, and, and with the idea that it's also going to continue to address the local control and the liability concerns that have been raised. Um, as part of that, the board requested a full inventory of non-DBB member uses of fiber. And all that means is, um, who is using our fiber today that is not a member. So, we're going to provide a list of who that is, at Burnsville is, Dakota County is, and anybody that is currently leasing their fiber or have some kind of arrangement with third parties to use their fiber assets, and create a final inventory of who that is that's using our fiber infrastructure today. We know individually, but we're going to provide it to the, the DBB, so they have a collective list of who's being, who's using infrastructure. And then the board also requested, again, as I mentioned earlier, additional IRU input language for further discussion in October and subsequent meetings. With that, I'll pause for your questions, if you have any.
Kara?
So, I, I am happy to hear, um, that you're looking again at further IRU language changes, because I, um, I implore the DBB to separate out the CNET and the INET into separate IRUs. I, I, I really strongly suggest that, um, so that maybe we can get past our impasse. Uh, so, that makes me happy that perhaps they're open to that, um, because what started to really raise alarm bells for me was, uh, the language was separate, they were not separate IRUs, but the language was separate. Um, Burnsville, other communities, the county, raised questions about it, and instead of addressing that and separating it out, instead they took the language and mushed it together further. So, they did exactly the opposite of what they asked. And when you're entering into a partnership, um, with a group where you're going to, you're going to work together on something, that's, that's not the way to go on that. That's not the way to build trust and to say, come on, trust me, this is going to be a great experience, and we're going to work really well together. Um, so, I, I am happy to see that. Uh, as far as doing the INET, um, I can absolutely understand the cost savings and, and why we would want to go into that, and also leasing our fiber to other types of governmental agencies. Like, I get that as well. Uh, but I am very cautious on the idea of us doing, engaging in the CNET, um, with the group, because number one, I, I do think we're getting into a level of competition that I'm not, I, I don't think is a, is a proper role for us to get to. Um, but also, the last six months has really brought home to me that, uh, our government can do a level of control and shut things down in ways that we never contemplated would happen in our country, in our state, and in our city. And then we would have private business on assets that we own, and we could turn them off, or we could be ordered to turn them off. And although people will say, oh, that's so outlandish, can anyone right now really say that that is just out of the realm of possibility? Because I don't think it is at that point. So, I also have a concern about that. But that's a business evaluation to decide if a business would ever want to take that chance. If I were a business, there's no way, there's no way I would walk into that at all. Um, and I also think that we, whether we're part of the CNET or not, um, and frankly, whether we're part of the DBB or not, we can still work with our partners and contract with them and that type of thing. That does not preclude us from if a company would want, want to use our fiber and another, other city's fiber and another, in the county's fiber and that type of thing, and they're in the DBB. We can still do those agreements. Um, there's nothing that says if you don't do the CNET, or if you aren't even part of the DBB, you're just locked out forever, and it's like the Berlin Wall went up and, and nothing can get passed. So, it's, this is not all or nothing on any of this. But I am really hopeful and pleased with your presentation that they are realizing the, um, the depth of caution that we are having, and that we really do have issues with the IRU language. And so, I am, I am happy to hear that, um, because it has not appeared up until this point. There was much interest in addressing that, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Tom?
Councilmember Schultz. Also, a- as it relates to the CNET conversation, um, just a, a, another point of clarity, that the DBB is also pursuing, um, addressing the definition of what the CNET is and who a CNET user is.
Yes.
Obviously, today, the language in the JPA defines anybody not a member is a CNET user, and that then defines the MVTA, the school districts...
Exactly.
And everybody else is a CNET. So, there's also been some recognition of that and needing to address that and, and have conversation about that, too.
Yes, and I heard that, too, and I was very appreciative of that as well. Thank you.
Yeah. And it's good that the, the, the DBB board continues to work on all of this. And you're, they're going to amend the JPA, I'm sure, as this goes on as well, when you look at the agreements for the IRUs.
That could very well be an outcome of the conversations that are continuing.
That's right. Yeah, so...
And I have just two more slides.
Absolutely, please.
The systems plan, as I've, um, mentioned earlier, um, is being updated. The DBB recently approved moving forward and soliciting a consultant to help update the systems plan with the intent to focus on, um, obviously, up... to focus on, obviously, updating the one from 2018 that's in place, reviewing broadband in Dakota County, getting stakeholder input, as I mentioned earlier, opportunities for institutional network expansion, and as that relates not only to the physical expansion of the institutional network, the opportunities to share services over the institutional network, and how the consultant can help us maybe steer in a direction, maybe in terms of opportunities for projects that we could interconnect and, and do together because of the institutional network. An inventory of the unused dark fiber assets. So you've heard me mention we've got excess capacity. What is that excess capacity and was, what does that mean? And then economic development opportunities and community value that might be identified in the, the systems update. And then operating models and structure and pricing models that may be considered in terms of, as it relates to any kind of contractual agreements that we may move forward with, with third parties, especially as we talk about being a wholesale provider and not a service provider of infrastructure. Opportunities for obviously collaboration, and then outreach and communication strategy. How do we do proactive marketing of those assets and outreach? The solicitation for the consultant is expected to go out after finalizing the language or the bid specifications at the October, after the October DBB meeting. And then with the idea that a report from consultant would hopefully come back in early 2021 so that they could act upon that to make some decisions and continue that conversation during that time period, too, about IRU and C net definitions that we've talked about.
Okay. Tom and Councilmember Dan G.
Oh, I didn't.
No, no, I'm just talking to the two of you. Is that, as you're, as you're going through the systems plan, and for me, it's looking at the infrastructure and economic development opportunities and community value. I am looking at the Center Village because it's a mixed use. That's going to need infrastructure when we're going to move into it. And so it's not just the roads that we're going to be looking at and the underpass and all the, the other things, but this communications highway.
That would add to our route miles.
Yes.
If we decided to bring in infrastructure or fiber.
And then I'm also needing to take a look at that whole County Road 42 corridor. So if you can add that into the list when you're looking at economic development opportunities because that's the value to the city. If we're going to look to the future and the infrastructure that we have to build in that area, this is the communication infrastructure that we need to make sure that is part of that plan.
Forty-two would probably be a county project, though.
Yeah, but it's still going to have, yeah, absolutely. But that's that partnership.
Yeah, no, no, I know, I get that part, but let's put it on the county's bill.
Well, we're going to be working on that, we're going to be working on that road anyway, right? So I just wanted to make sure that, that that's recognized and on the forefront.
I will be sure to bring that up and identify that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I have one last slide.
Please?
Sorry.
We're not wanting to, to, to miss any of this stuff, and that's why I wrote you a note about our needs in Burnsville and what's going to be the value for us as we move forward. But I wanted to make sure that that's articulated also.
We are in the process right now of, of sitting down for planning out future years with the DBB to identify future potential projects, and we can add those to the list. And that, that comes as an annual part of our budget process with them. So I definitely will do that. Burnsville does have a couple of active projects right now that I just wanted to make you aware of.
Of course we do.
Couple institutional network projects that we are moving forward on. We are expanding in our Al Magnet Park area to the north side of the park to provide some security services and other infrastructure services for lighting control and other activities in that, in that portion of the park. We're also expanding in Nicklet Commons Park as part of the, the project going forward right now in the water feature. And in the near future, fire station number one, the new fire station, will be connecting to our existing fiber assets that are within a quarter mile. And there's actually two routes, one on forty-two and one on County Road five. So we'll have redundant path into that brand-new fire station.
Okay.
Yeah. And then I, we already talked about the proposed DBB budget amount. We're expecting to go down by, it's going to be adopted at the October meeting, but our expected budget is going down by about $900. And then the DBB did unveil a brand-new website that is now available for the public and anybody interested at dbbmn.gov, and that contains meeting minutes, board meeting information, the JPA, the bylaws, and any
Budget.
Budget, and any past and previous activities since 2018, since the inception of the DBB. And I promise that is it. That's all I have.
Are there any questions?
We prolonged this, not you, Tom.
Yeah, that was our fault.
But it, but it was great to have that kind of discussion, but thank you. And so I'm glad that you'll, and I mentioned it so when you're doing the, the systems work that you don't forget of all the things, just like we're doing now. But are you, we also adding more route miles or Wi-Fi into our parks?
As we extend our fiber into our parks, we will be adding a small amount of route miles. Miles is probably a too large a term.
Okay.
Route feet.
Yards.
Yards.
So, but because we'll have Wi-Fi and then it'll just drop down someplace, right?
Yeah. And as I've mentioned earlier, the, the initial intent for that, obviously, is facility, asset management, security, and then we always add the amenity of Wi-Fi in the, in those areas, too, as we're doing that. And we're expanding into those parks each year.
Yeah. So it'd be interesting to understand with all of the distance learning and all of the also work from home, how's that affecting the use? Because I know that I've had some calls from people saying that I can't get service, and I say, well, then who's your service provider? And they'll say, it's Comcast. We'll call Comcast.
And I believe the executive director's intent is to ask the consultant to do some surveying of the stakeholders. So we'll get some additional information back.
That raises a good question, though. If that were to continue to happen, then, I mean, are we fielding those calls if internet's not fast enough? Does that become something that we're obligated to respond to at that point?
Well, I add two. I don't know if our staff had, had received any. I ask who their provider is, if it's Frontier or Comcast. I tell, that's who you call.
So I would
We don't manage. It's not a
I would, I guess I would hope that that would be a conversation piece as the C net conversation evolves, that if the increased usage takes place, are we going to be the ones that have to respond to those phone calls if my internet's not working or my internet's not fast enough because it's our fiber?
We're not the service provider. So the service provider would be the one responding to those activities. But at the end, if the, the cause of that would be infrastructure, that would have to be dealt with just like any other
Yeah.
Infrastructure problems that would occur. Generally, over the years, as it relates to service provider complaints or calls that we've taken and I fielded, we generally take the calls on behalf of the service providers, and then we contact the service providers and work with them through resolution for the residents or businesses that are calling and having those concerns. We generally don't have the, we can't resolve the issue because it's not our service, but we put them in touch with the right people typically. That's a role that we've generally played.
So next time my satellite goes out, I can call you and you'll call DirecTV for me, Tom?
I may not have much call, but I might find a person that could
Okay.
Resolve your issue.
Good enough. You don't have cable?
I won't get into that. Okay. With that, thank you so much, Tom. Really appreciate your presentation. Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, that's fine. I was just going to say, we did track network capacity during COVID, and I can send you that website, but that's cable networks.
Oh, you had, you had crashes?
That's problem, but
We can't hear you, Anna.
Can you come up to a mic?
Yeah, come up to a mic so that we can hear you.
I was just going to say that Anna Boroff from the Cable Association, we did track our network capacity during COVID just because of everyone working from home and distance learning and all of those things.
Yeah.
And I can send you, I mean, Burnsville's networks from a cable perspective performed fabulously. Now, that won't help you on the satellite internet side, but I can send you the website where you, they're still tracking it, so, and network capacity, just to make sure that we future-proof our networks and that we have the capacity always available. That's all.
Thank you, Anna. Okay. The next item is Mindot. This is Mindot presentation regarding our 2025, 35W improvements. And I think Public Works Director Ryan Peterson is going to introduce our guests from Mindot. Did we lose our guests?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I don't know, controllers, are guests available online?
Oh, they're going to be zooming in.
I have, hold on.
Chad Casey?
Just, hold on.
Do we need a break?
Chad, yes. Anyone else?
Can we take a five-minute break?
Chad's the primary speaker.
Chad is here.
Okay.
And he is unmuted.
Yes, I'm here.
All right. Thanks for being here, Chad. I'll give a quick, I'm hearing, I'm seeing some five-minute things?
Yeah.
Five-minute break?
Oh, I, we will recess the Burnsville City Council work session for five minutes, and then we'll come back. We'll take a five-minute break. Thank you. Payment project. Ryan?
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for allowing us to talk about this project tonight. We're moving from data transportation into vehicles and other types of transportation. So I have Chad Casey here tonight. He is going to be talking about a project that's planned in the year 2025, and it'll start on, on 35W. That will start where the current project of, for the bridge over the river ends, all the way down to the 35W, 35E split. So it'll be a big project. But I'm not going to give away too many details to allow him to go through that. And then we have some questions for you that we'd look like some direction on at the end about bridge aesthetics. So with that, Chad, are you there?
Yeah, welcome, Chad.
Yep.
All right. I will advance the slides when you ask me to.
Yeah, I think you can just skip ahead right now. And maybe one more. Oh, yes, I'm Chad Casey, and I just took the project over here in the short light of this project. I'm now the second project manager. We had somebody leave Mindot. So I'm just getting up to speed on it. Right now, let's see, the, right now, it's a fiscal year 25 project, so we're out ahead of it. It seems like a long time, but at this point, there's still a lot of decisions that need to be made, and really that time is going to fly. So this is a really great time to get going with the city and make sure that, you know, this is a pretty important corridor, not just for Mindot, but also for the city in assuming. So we want to make sure that we get your views in on the corridor. And so the corridor runs from the junction of I-35, E, and W down in the south end, and runs up to Cliff Road on the north end. And you can advance the slide. So the overall project, the driver of the project is the pavement right now. Right now, it's asphalt over concrete. So we're going to take off that asphalt layer and add a new concrete layer. So there'll be a net increase of about four inches on the pavement surface. And along with that, then, we'll need to reconstruct the median barrier, reinstall a guardrail. We'll have to reconstruct under the bridges to maintain the vertical clearance. We're going, our traffic management center is going to add some dynamic message signs so we can communicate to the travelers. There'll be drainage improvements and repairs, ADA upgrades on the side streets and the ramps, and then lighting along the corridor will get replaced. And then along with that, then, we do have a number of bridges in the area that we are looking at replacing. And those include Highway 13 over I-35. We've got Burnsville Parkway, and then the I-35W bridges over Cliff Road. So those will include elements like signing So those will include elements like signing, lighting, aesthetic features, and then, um, some retaining walls likely. In advance. Preliminary traffic control plan, we have just directional closures with crossovers to move traffic to one side while we reconstruct the other. We do have a lot of work to do with traffic modeling to determine how many lanes need to keep moving through the corridor. There's potential for movable barrier to keep an extra lane going in the peak hour direction. And then we've also got, uh, congestion management and safety program at MnDOT. And we have a contract going right now that we just got underway to explore some potential, uh, improvements in the area to get some extra funding into the corridor. So that could be things like auxiliary lanes, pinch points, um, work on ramps that might help congestion, that kind of thing. And so, yeah, we will work closely with the city on those elements as we, um, develop some ideas. All right, then, uh, the first, uh, bridge, I think this is, you know, one of the more important bridges along the corridor for the city. So this is one that we're gonna want to coordinate with you on. You can see there, the bridge itself was relatively simple, but the aesthetic treatments on the outside, um, make it a really, a little bit more decorative and nice looking bridge. So that's the kind of thing that we will want to get some direction on. In advance the slide. One of the first options that we're looking at is, you know, what, when replacing this bridge, we wanna make sure that we get the deck wide enough for, you know, future use and what the city needs. These typical sections might be a little bit hard to read. The details aren't super important at this point. We'll get into detail a lot more later. But the first slide is just the existing bridge width out there. And if MnDOT was reconstructing this, you know, on their own, if it was just our bridge out in the middle of nowhere, uh, we would be upgrading it to current standards, which means, you know, seven foot sidewalk on either side, um, that center left turn lane would have to get a little bit wider. And MnDOT would fund those elements. Now, if we're looking at some additional width for, for, um, like an extra shared use path on one side, that kind of thing, then we would look to the city. And, uh, that would likely require local funds. You can advance the slide. All right, then we come to aesthetics. And, um, as I mentioned, I just took this project over and unfortunately, at the same time, our aesthetic, um, bridge engineer, who's really kind of the guru on that, is, um, out on vacation, so I need to catch up with her. Typically MnDOT will allocate seven percent of the bridge cost to aesthetics. And there's likely a bridge, what we call a visual quality manual for this corridor. That kind of sets a standard of how bridges look to maintain a consistency throughout the corridor. And so that's what I need to track down to figure out if, you know, how that would impact what we design, what type of, um, treatments we put on, surfacing, color, that kind of thing. But we would also then coordinate that with the city to see what kind of elements that you might want to add to the bridge. If you want to replace in kind with the aesthetic treatment that's on the existing bridges. I'm not sure if that can be salvaged and reinstalled, or if maybe the city wants to go another direction with the aesthetics. But then the above and beyond costs are typically borne by the local unit of government. Our baseline scenario, now this is just a, kind of a standard visual element on some corridors. We have a little concrete parapet. We call it on the bottom there, kind of a guard to help, you know, keep people, um, on the bridge, keep equipment from, you know, running into a fence. It just looks a lot nicer. Then we have that somewhat ornamental railing, um, to provide a nice visual element. And this is not necessarily what would be used on this corridor, but it's an idea of the kind of thing that MnDOT would, um, normally pay for with that seven percent. Any lighting up on the bridge on the local road would be paid for and maintained by the city. But we would work, obviously, with you to determine, you know, what type of lighting system that you'd be looking for if you did want to have that. In advance. The next bridge is, uh, the I-35 bridges over Cliff Road. And along with that, there is the railroad, so we are working on coordinating with the railroad to determine, uh, the bridge type and what it would look like, um, underneath with the pier placement. There are a few different options that we are looking at. Um, on the right-hand side is, uh, kind of our base option right now, where we are replacing the bridge basically in kind, working with the railroad to determine, you know, maybe we need to move that pier a little bit further away from the railroad. But yet, keep basically the same width corridor for the most part. Um, there might be a little bit of room to make some improvements there, but for the most part, it's the same cross-section. Down on the left-hand side on the bottom is kind of a bigger option if the railroad said, no, we want you to move completely out of our right of way. Then we would be looking at, um, you know, a longer bridge and potentially, you know, if the city's looking for a wider cross-section on Cliff Road, then we could potentially, um, lengthen that bridge, uh, make some changes. At some point, then, the city would likely be, uh, asked to participate in some of those extra costs for the extra width. All right, you can advance. And then finally, it's the Highway 13 bridges over 35. I don't anticipate a lot of changes in the bridge type itself. Again, we have that, um, decorative aesthetic treatment on the outside of the bridge. So that is something that we can coordinate, um, with the city on, uh, to determine, you know, what, what kind of a visual look, um, you're looking for. Are you trying to kind of duplicate what's in place, or is there another direction that you would like to go? All right, so next steps, um, we're working on finalizing those bridge scopes. So that's where we do need to start working with the city on, you know, what kind of widths we're looking, widths we're looking at, uh, for bike and pedestrians, and then also the aesthetic treatments. And we are working on that, um, congestion management study to find some, you know, hopefully we can find some low-costs, um, improvements that we can fund with that, uh, those additional funds. And then coming up with the cost estimates and finalizing the overall project scope. So it's kind of a rapid timeline right now to get a lot of that stuff wrapped up, you know, as much as we can early in the year. Now, I think a lot of this is going to probably stretch into next year, um, you know, working on the aesthetic treatments, especially in the widths and making sure that, uh, you know, the city is getting what they want out there and negotiating funding and that kind of thing. I think that is the end of the official presentation, uh, but if anybody has questions on that, um, I'll do my best to answer. And we have a couple other MnDOT people also online. So if there's questions that I can't answer, we can maybe bring them on board.
Okay, uh, Ryan?
Yep, thank you very much, Chad. Good presentation, very informative. Uh, a couple of things I'd like to add is, um, Cliff Road is a county road.
Yeah.
So they'll probably be more on the hook for improvements there than we would be. But, um, that's just a detail, but nonetheless, I've.
That's a good point, yeah.
So that's one. Two is, we've, on the 13 bridge, we had to take off some lights that were literally hanging by the cable that was over traffic.
Yeah.
So we did that about three or four years ago.
Yeah.
And then at the time, we pretty much thought, okay, whenever that bridge goes, maybe we would just remove the decorative features and that would go back to more of a standard one. And then Burnsville Parkway, obviously, is right in the middle part of the city, um, that we would, had, whenever this time came, we would be ready to put some aesthetic elements there. Maybe it's just rehab the ones that we got and reattach them. Uh, to that point, we had, um, there was discussion of working on this bridge sooner. Uh, so we, our CIP indicated $350,000 in the year 2022 to work on those. We now, with this information, have moved that back to 2025. And part of the goal tonight is just to gauge your interest in making sure that you still want to, um, have those aesthetic elements on there. And then also, you could point out, Cliff Road is really the center of the MRQ. So if there wanted to be any type of MRQ designations, that would be an opportunity there as well.
Yeah, and the other is the, um, Parkway Bridge has those ornamental lights.
Yep.
And so that's still working.
Those are working. Those are at least go up and not, don't hang down.
That's right. And so we can keep them.
We're keeping those until then, and then if we, um, what I heard tonight is, the, whatever lighting we choose to put on the replacement bridge would be ours to pay for and maintain. And that's true throughout other bridges as well, so.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna go to Councilmember Keely.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Chad, um, can you go back to your comment about the lanes?
Yeah.
And the comment about a bike lane and costs not being borne by MnDOT? You do understand, Chad, that we're a little sore yet from the whole bike lane issue with the I-35 bridge, and so.
Okay, yep. Yeah, I don't know a lot about that one, but I think I heard a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one, uh, you know, 150 million and then forgetting a, a connection above the floodplain was, was kind of a stinger for a lot of our multimodal community. And, uh, obviously, I know MnDOT is a big supporter of multimodal transportation solutions, including biking, walking, scooters, et cetera. So, you know, that comment about if we want a bike lane, the city would have to bear the cost, doesn't resonate well with us. And shouldn't with MnDOT too, right? So could you elaborate on what, why that position is, uh, taken as it is?
Oh, sure, and, you know, as project managers, a lot of times, you know, we're really, um, you know, a lot of us are really interested in providing that kind of element. And obviously, you know, our administration and everything would like to do that too, but we are, uh, we do have a cost participation policy and we do have to, to some extent, follow that and we can be a little bit locked in. Um, there are some opportunities, if this was a MnDOT bridge, um, it might be a little bit easier. Uh, but we can certainly look into that and I can ask the questions too.
Thank you.
He's gonna look at you.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna want to ensure that we have a bike lane.
Right, yep.
On these bridges because, you know, when you spend this type of money to rehab, uh, these road projects, this is our opportunity to include that. So those, those of, uh, those in our community who really enjoy biking, rely on biking, scooters, or walking, having a, a safe lane for them to travel in across these bridges is very, very, very important. Just to fulfill that multimodal vision, right?
Madam Mayor, I think there's.
Yeah.
Ten-foot bike lane is on the north side, I think, currently. That would match into, and I think the south side is, is just a sidewalk. So perhaps, you know, we end up with a sidewalk on the south side, if that's the case, and then do a trail on the north side.
Yeah, for me, I would like staff to come back and show us what, when you're looking at the three options that were shown and what would those costs be? I know we, we, you're pushing it back, but, uh, and then what would it mean if we have the decorative, we retain those decorative items that's already on the outside of the, um, the Parkway Bridge?
Yeah, it's a nice looking bridge.
You know?
Maybe if, maybe if Chad could explain briefly the visual quality process. There is a process that these projects can go through to help determine and get input from the community.
Okay.
We followed that process with the I-35 bridge replacement.
Yeah, and we also followed it when we re, did, re-improve the Parkway Bridge and the 13. So we followed that process, but the thing is, it's really understanding what MnDOT's gonna be doing if anything has changed since then.
Right, and that'll be a, a big part of, um, you know, working with your city staff and in your engineering staff and public works. We will certainly bring our central office bridge people on board. And they're kind of the experts on the aesthetics and kind of the holders of those visual quality manuals. So I haven't seen it yet for this corridor. I'm not sure exactly what all is in it and how that would relate, you know, to those visual elements that are currently on the bridges. So we will, uh, definitely set up a meeting with our central office bridge people.
So it sounds like we have a lot of work yet to do. This is just the beginning.
Yeah, this is very early, yep.
Yeah.
I, I just had a quick comment on the Burnsville Parkway Bridge. Didn't about 10, 12 years ago, we have some issues with the electrical under that bridge that we?
Yeah.
Ended up dealing with and taking out?
At the same time.
It was the 13.
At the same time, those lights were falling on, well, didn't fall, but were threatening to fall on 13. My Burnsville Parkway was having similar problems.
Having the same issue, that's what I thought.
There, we decided to repair those, so it stayed, uh, what it was.
And we have a good solution for all that now going forward when we do the new one?
This year, we, that time, we decided to put exterior electrical equipment on instead of interior. So I don't know what happened the first go around, but we, it was not.
It almost fell down.
It was pre-salt, it was pre-salt, uh, and then the salt and, uh, what we had there didn't, um.
Yeah.
Go together very well.
Well, lessons learned.
Lessons learned.
Lessons learned, okay, uh, Vince?
Thank you, um, I would generally be in support of including some aesthetic elements to both of these bridges. I am curious, and I guess I've never noticed this, but why do we have bull horns and railroad, uh, wheels on our 13 bridge right now?
Do you know? Uh, yes, I do.
That's a grandmother question.
Yeah.
I've never noticed that before.
There was a task force and when the, uh, folks were taking a look at, you know, they went to indigenous and how Burnsville was, um, um, came to be. And so, you know, it was a farming community.
Okay.
And that's why you have, uh, all of that, yeah.
I've never seen that before.
Yeah, and, uh, and so the thing is, you, the, some of the people who were on that task force, their names are on the bridge.
Oh.
Ken Slipka, John, um, from Dodge, Adamich.
Adamich.
There's, uh, Ed Delmore, there are quite a few.
Well, then let me just say, I'm not, I'm not talking disparagingly about it. I just, I've never noticed it and it kind of surprised me, so, but I, of course.
Now that you know the people who were part of the task force and who convened the community.
I, I was never, um.
I, I think you were really young back then.
Yeah, I don't know when that happened, but, um, I, of course, would wanna be, uh, sensitive to costs and things like that.
Absolutely.
You know, we're seeing lighting, uh, becoming pretty trending with bridges and things, and so I'd be curious to see if we could incorporate, um.
Yeah.
Some of those elements in well, as well, but, um, if the question here is, is, are we willing to look at? Then yes, I, I would certainly be interested in looking at, um, some of those enhancements.
Okay, yeah, and so, um, I think, uh, staff will work with MnDOT and bring back some of those costs to us and as we look at it. And then, of course, that'll also include looking at that, uh, uh, lane for bikes and what that's going to mean. And then you had set aside some funds and.
We'll analyze the aesthetics and that bike lane thing and, uh, here, Councilmember Keely said we need to apply some pressure and attempt to see if we can figure out a way to get that, that particular aspect.
So Chad, it's a partnership.
Yes, it definitely is, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have our ways to go. There'll be some iterations here, so.
Yeah, okay, good.
Yeah, we're excited to work with you.
Okay, great, so you have direction?
Yes, we know we should entertain the visual.
And we are interested in the, in decorative elements. And then, uh, also taking a look at the, uh, the, the width of the bridge. Okay, thank you very much, Chad.
All right, thank you.
So are you also on the next one?
No.
No? Okay, well, thank you for being with us. And so the next one is, uh, our, uh, Highway 13 corridor study, um, and with MnDOT. And Jen, this is yours.
Yes, Mayor, Council. Um, so we, um, with MnDOT, they presented the introduction to this corridor study at a work session. I believe it was in February, January, February, earlier this year. A lot of progress has been made, and so, um, I'm gonna turn it over, I believe Chris Cromie, uh, with the consultant of. I believe Chris Cromie, uh, with the consultant of Bullman Mink will be starting it up.
Yeah, welcome, Chris. Good to see you, Jen.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Excellent. Uh, yeah, as, as Jen mentioned, um, we've been making a, a lot of progress in the Highway thirteen corridor study uh through Savage and Burnsville. And we wanted to share some of the progress that we've made thus far, since we were last here in February. Um, and we're, uh, we're, we're closing in on, on answering some of the very foundation questions about access locations and at-grade or grade-separated access conditions at those locations. So we want to share some of that with you tonight. Um, we've been, we've had some great dialogue from city staff, um, at the, at our project management team. Both Jen and Ryan have been, uh, have been great, representing the, the city's interests, and we wanna get some council feedback on, on some specific parts. Uh, most specifically, we want to talk about some of the variation or the alternatives of access to highway commercial properties, uh, the waste management facility, uh, the need for some of the frontage road improvements between some of the intersection locations that we're considering. We're gonna review uh three alternatives that we're considering that provide full to, partial to full grade-separated alternatives at Nicollet Avenue. Uh, and we would talk, we want to talk a little bit about the reasonableness of these investments and implementation timing. So, sorry, Jen, I was on slide two already. You can advance to slide three. So just a, a quick overview of our corridor study. It does include um Highway thirteen and one oh one, all the way from one sixty-nine, uh, through Savage and over to Nicollet Avenue in Burnsville. The purpose of our study is to really develop a better understanding of the needs and the opportunities in the corridor, uh, reach consensus with the various players, various stakeholders, on what the long-term vision for this corridor looks like, uh, and make some improvements with the first project at Dakota Yosemite Avenues that's funded for twenty twenty. Uh, the project includes a hybrid environmental assessment. Uh, this is a relatively new uh process to work through at a corridor level, the initial environmental clearance for the project as well as, for the first project as well as the corridor as a whole. Uh, this will enable some flexibility for the level and timing of, of investments. Next slide, please. So real briefly, I think we all know, um, some of the challenges on Highway thirteen. It is operating at or above capacity for many hours of the day. We do have several intersections that have higher-than-average crash, vehicle crash rates. Uh, we have a lot of truck traffic, uh, facilities like waste management, ports of Savage, other, uh, other industries in the corridor. This is a, a major trucking route. Uh, and then we have relatively the, uh, relatively difficult conditions for pedestrian, bikes, bicycles through the corridor, uh, both along the corridor and, and crossing the corridor. Next slide, please. So when we were here in February, um, introducing this corridor study uh to the council, we also began our, our public engagement for the, for the corridor study. This included a, a open house meeting uh in February, as well as some face-to-face interactions with business or, business owners and other stakeholders. Some of our, the top concerns that we heard were very consistent with some of our technical analysis and our primary needs to be addressed. Uh, those being the congestion issues along the highway, uh, the freight conditions, the freight issues, the mobility and accessibility to freight generators, um, travel along the Highway thirteen fronted roads, and walking and bike safety. Next slide, please. So, uh, we are really finishing up our first year of a multi-year uh study here along Highway thirteen. Uh, and we're closing in, and like I said, on some foundational, uh, foundational questions, answers to foundational questions. Um, the intent is that we're gonna move into our environmental study uh so that we can advance not only the first project, but then also uh zero in on potential impacts or mitigation to improvements to the rest of the corridor. That'll occur uh in twenty twenty-one. We'll also be doing uh the, the design work and any right-of-way acquisition of first project at Dakota Avenue in the city of Savage. Next slide, please. So here's a, a glimpse of what we've been up to over the last six months. We've started at a very high level uh to look first at uh some big questions about where are the potential access locations? And how does that fit with local street network, uh, and the supporting roadway system? Future, existing and future, uh, non-motorized transportation and other land use planning activities. Uh, we had a number of alternatives that we screened, primarily on quantitative-type screening before we moved into, to level two, into some stick-figure-type diagrams. The level-two screening, I had a combination of qualitative and quantitative uh measures. And again, it was a refinement of potential alternatives and screening out of things that simply didn't meet our purpose and need. And lastly, over the last two months, we've been in our, our final level-three screening to zero in on a corridor vision and some flexibility or variations as to what design may look like at particular locations. Next slide, please. So what the project management team is recommending from a big-picture standpoint are the locations of, of the primary intersection locations. I'll start with some of the existing intersections or interchanges that we don't anticipate changes to, primarily Highway thirteen one oh one, Highway thirteen and County Road five, and Highway thirteen and Interstate thirty-five W. Those all, will all continue to uh exist and function well in their, in their current configurations. Uh, we are proposing primary intersection loca- locations at Dakota Avenue, Quinton Avenue, Chauvin Avenue, and Nicollet Avenue. And primary intersection locations through that three levels of screening that identify to best connect the roadway system at Highway thirteen as well as the, the land access. Primary intersections, you can expect full movement uh intersections for both pets and, and vehicles. Uh, we also identify two secondary intersections. These are, are spaced too closely to primary intersections to serve all movements in some conditions. Those locations are at Lynn Avenue, right in downtown Savage, and then, and Washburn Avenue. Both of those locations are full-access signalized intersections. Next slide, please. So we have some variations in what the, the, the actions of the primary and secondary locations could look like. The first variation I want to talk about is uh an enhanced at-grade corridor between Quinton Avenue and Savage to Washburn Avenue in Burnsville. This would include a, a grade-separated interchange at the ports of Savage, which we won't spend too much time on tonight. It also includes partial or full-grade separated interchange at Nicollet Avenue, which we will look in more detail in this later presentation. But this concept would require six lanes on Highway thirteen, east of the railroad bridge, over to, to County Road five and, and Interstate thirty-five. It features reduced-conflict signalized intersections along the corridor that simplify signal phasing and separates out conflicts to accommodate all movements in a more efficient orderly manner. Uh, this is a relatively new concept uh in Minnesota. You may be familiar with reduced-conflict intersections on four-lane divided highways in, in many rural areas that are implemented for safety concerns. Uh, this builds upon that with, with the introduction of signalized U-turns, as well as uh signalized left turns across movements. Uh, while it's not that common in Minnesota, it is uh common in other parts of the country. North Carolina specifically has had quite a bit of success in the Raleigh-Durham triangle area in moving large amounts of traffic with, with these types of, of signalized improvements. Uh, the pros to the, to this condition, uh, there, there are quite a few. Obviously, managing traffic conflicts at-grade is, is cheaper investment than on grade separation with bridges. Um, this, on Highway thirteen, this does move about the same amount of traffic on Highway thirteen as a freeway-type facility at roughly the same operating speeds of enough forty to forty-five miles per hour during peak periods. So it does provide a capacity benefit. The cons to this uh, uh, this type of improvement is we are, which you'll see a little, a little bit later in the slide presentation, we are seeing um some delays during peak hours on the side streets. So some of the frontage roads may end up being backed by the signal from time to time. Um, it does accommodate all movements through U-turns, including crossing movements, uh, which uh some drivers may find this to be a little less comfortable, a little less familiar. And then we anticipate this to be a lower-crash solution compared to not doing anything or traditional signals. But we have, we have limited data to, 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 to back that up at this point. Next slide, please. So this is uh meant to illustrate what the, what a signalized reduced-conflict intersection uh would operate as. So you can see uh all the movement, all the traffic approaching from the side street locations would be required to make a right-hand turn. If you're wanting to go in the other direction, you can see the U-turn location. Jen, I think if you click the automation on there, you can follow the, the yellow dot in the presentation. Shows that U-turn movement to, to continue on or to cross the, cross the highway. So it, it substantially reduces the conflict points uh on the main line, which we believe will be a safety benefit. It also turns the left turns at primary intersections and the right turn turns. Next slide, please. So this is a, a different approach to the at-grade facilities. This is a, what we're calling a, a hybrid option. Uh, it includes a series of, of high-T intersections, similar to what was built over at Highway thirteen one oh one, uh, where one direction of, of Highway thirteen would be elevated over the left turning movements underneath the bridge. And so we're evaluating uh this type of configuration at, at Quinton Avenue in Savage to the, and to the south to serve the, the city of Savage to the south, uh, at Lynn Avenue to the north to serve the ports, at Chauvin Avenue, again, to serve the residential properties and the park properties and some of the commercial properties on the south side. And then Washburn Avenue as well to the north to serve waste management and some of the commercial properties on the north. Uh, some of the benefits of this type, type of configuration is this works a lot like a freeway for main line because we don't have, we don't stop true movements. And this also provides uh more opportunities for grade-separated pit crossings. Some of the disadvantages to this configuration is some of the connectivity across Highway thirteen is more circuitous. For example, at Chauvin and Washburn Avenue, both of those locations, you could cross over Highway thirteen today. Um, if you're on the south side of Chauvin Avenue and you want to get, or south side of Highway thirteen at Chauvin Avenue, and you want to get to the north side, say, over to Menards, your main option will be to get on Highway thirteen and go over to County Road five and come back on the frontage road or Highway thirteen. Uh, these intersections are simply too close to, to enable us to change the elevation that we need on the highway to allow the, the crossover movements over to the left turns. So it's more circuitous. This one has generally a higher cost as we look at the, the whole corridor and, and multiple bridge structures. Uh, next slide, please. We have a, a couple of freeway oper- options that we're looking at. Both, both the, the hybrid and the freeway options would enable us to, to keep Highway thirteen as a four-lane roadway, as opposed to six-lane if we're at-grade. Um, under this scenario, we would have a high-T-type intersection over at Quinton Avenue, and then a, a, a roundabout interchange at Chauvin Avenue, and a, an underpass or overpass at Washburn. And so access in this area from Highway thirteen would be served by this Chauvin Avenue intersection. And it looks like that example in the upper right, could look like that example in the upper right-hand corner with a, with a peanut roundabout at Highway thirteen that ties in entrance and exit ramps and the adjacent frontage roads to could make some continuous flowing traffic uh through there. I know what we heard from Jen and Ryan and, and others, that the Washburn Avenue intersection is a, a priority for uh the city of Burnsville because of the commercial property that's there today, uh, that, that relies on that quick access and visibility uh as well as waste man- management. But as you'll see here in, in some of our analysis, uh, the proximity of Washburn Avenue to the ramps at County Road five simply gets too close in some of these grade-separated alternatives to get ramps constructed east of Washburn Avenue. So to get to Washburn Avenue, you would, you would exit at Chauvin and be reliant on those frontage roads that exist on both sides of the Highway thirteen to get back or up to, to County Road five. So this one works fairly well, and it, it introduces some, some fairly familiar designs. Obviously, as we go more closer to a freeway-type facility, our access needs to be spaced further apart, and then accessibility is changed in this condition. further apart and then accessibility is changed in this condition. A second freeway option that we are considering is utilizing split diamond interchanges. This is where we basically split a traditional diamond interchange between two parallel local streets. You see a lot of these in, or some of these in, along Interstate 35W in South Minneapolis and 35E on the north side of St. Paul. This is something that we're considering at Lynn Avenue and Quinton Avenue and Savage to tie in more accessibility for downtown. And it is something that we looked at at the Washburn-Chauvin location. But as I mentioned, that Washburn ramps will be very difficult to maintain safe and efficient weaving conditions between that and the County Road 5 ramps. Next slide, please. Again, this is just an illustration of a split diamond interchange. This one happens to be up at Wheelock Parkway and Larpenter Avenue on 35E north of downtown St. Paul. Next slide, please. So my next couple of slides will present some of the high-level operational results of these concepts. So this is the at-grade super street concept. And you can see based on the colors, both on the main line color being yellow, which is a level of service D, which is a very acceptable main line operation condition all the way out into 2040 for that super street. Where we do see some level service F or delays that start getting up to that 50, 50-second range and beyond are at some of those U-turn locations where we simply can't cycle the signals fast enough to serve those movements and we prioritize it for the true movements. And then some of the side street locations, more noticeably in the Savage location. And we'll note at the bottom right-hand part of the screen, you can see that main line weave area between the County Road 5 interchange that exists today and some of the U-turn, signalized U-turn at Washburn. So that would be something that we would need to resolve further. Next slide, please. This is the hybrid option that utilizes some of those high Ts. We can see in the morning peak, we're at that level of service D or better, which is excellent operations for 20 years out with main line travel speeds averaging about 46 miles per hour during the peak hour. We have a little bit difficult conditions that drop into a level of service E for westbound during the afternoon. We have a heavier PM peak distribution that way. And then again, that congestion at the weave section between County Road 5 and that exit ramp to Washburn. Next slide, please. So this is an illustration of the freeway type facility. Again, similarly, we have some acceptable operations on the main line and acceptable operations on the local streets as well, all except for that weave section again over at, between Washburn and Chauvin. And again, that's the traffic coming on westbound from County Road 5 weaving with westbound traffic trying to exit to Washburn Avenue. Next slide, please. From a safety perspective, we've used a predictive model to understand some of the crash risks relative to the change conditions or configuration of the access locations. This is based on nationwide data sets that measure crash potential relative to conflict exposure in the traffic stream. So as I mentioned earlier, the super street concept, which is represented in the green bar here, this is relatively new and we have limited safety data available to base predictive models on. This is based more on traditional signalized corridor. And because we're introducing more signalization, we would expect potentially higher crash, higher number of crashes. This is also a bit deceiving when we compare against our no build condition because of the amount of traffic, amount of traffic that would be utilizing the corridor. Our no build condition is very similar to the configuration today that has a maximum operating volume of about 60,000 vehicles per day. Each of the improvement concepts here, the super street concept, the hybrid and the freeway, each are expected to have a capacity and will accommodate up to 80,000 vehicles a day. So while we may have more crashes with the at-grade super street, we anticipate lower crash rates relative to the traffic volume using them. Then of course, you could see with the hybrid and freeway conditions, as we reduce the exposure of vehicle conflicts and crossing movements to a very minimum, entering and exiting, our crash potential drops substantially in those alternatives. Next slide, please. So this is a summary of our evaluation that the PMT has been working through as we evaluate these different measures and understand both the quantitative and qualitative attributes of vehicle mobility, freight mobility, vehicle safety, walkability and bikeability, community access to locations, and then the financial part of it. And you could see the range of costs that at-grade, super street is looking like in the 70 to 90 million range. The hybrid is a little over 100 million to 150 million, very similar to freeway three condition. And that freeway one condition, slightly less at 90 to 120 million. Again, what we're looking for as far as a discussion point here, well, maybe I won't quite get there yet. I'll go to one more slide. We did get some business input on some of these approaches this past summer through virtual methods. We've had a couple of virtual coffee meetings with business interests, some of the trucking industry in the corridor. And this is some of the things that we've heard through that outreach from the business community. So fewer traffic signals on the corridor would make it better for haulers. There are some concerns about maintaining accesses to business. It certainly is as you look at specific conditions. Some businesses are going to be served differently than they are today. Some of the local connectivity issues at Chauvin Avenue. There was, I guess we haven't looked at the Nicollet Avenue locations yet, but there was some support for some of the roundabout options that you'll see here in a minute at Nicollet Avenue based on the connectivity, access and mobility for pedestrians. And positive feedback overall bringing in the business community at this stage and sincere appreciation for being asked for their input this early in the process. So before we move on to Nicollet, I guess I'll stop there and just see if there is some discussion that we want to talk about with the Washburn, Washburn-Chauvin configurations that you saw on the west side of County Road 5 and Interstate 35W.
Jen, that was a lot of information to both you and Chris. And you all expect us to have absorbed all of the work that you have been doing for six months, right, tonight?
In 15 minutes or so.
Yeah. Yeah. So six months, you've been working on all of this and you're showing us all of these. But when I look at the last page, it looks like the freeway option, when you look at the cost and it's for the level of service, is...
Way number one.
Is the one that needs to be really reviewed. All of the other options are higher and the levels of service are poor or bad.
So if I could jump in, I just want to remind the council what we're looking for here tonight. We're not asking you to pick an option. You still need to go through an evaluation process to do that. We're looking for some feedback on the pluses and minuses, the give and take that we, that we're considering relative to more access at an at-grade level that perhaps will operate quite as good, particularly on the local street system, but more accessibility as compared to some of those freeway options or grade separation options that really make it problematic to maintain full access to and from the east at Washburn Avenue, which we heard loud and clear was a priority for the city of Burnsville. So we're not looking for the council to pick their option. We're not there yet in our process. We'll be back for that at a later date. We're looking for some input, initial reactions to some of these scenarios.
So I was very interested in trying to listen more about what happens at Nicollet.
Those are my next slides.
Is that, so that's the one I'm interested in. I mean, I've looked, Chauvin and there were ones that are in Burnsville and the rest are in Savage.
Yep.
And so on Chauvin, you have a separated grade?
Yes. In some of the scenarios, we would have a grade separation at Chauvin with full access to the frontage road system.
And Washburn is also in Burnsville. And is that a separated grade also? Because that'll allow traffic to continue to move on 13 without all of the lights and everything. Yeah, Jen?
So what Chris has presented is a range of options, some at-grade, that hybrid where it's a mix, and then two totally freeway options. And you can see on this slide, I don't know if you have access on your screens to this slide, the costs, the different variations that have been analyzed. I think what we're looking for in this section is there's trade-offs to the different, you see the cost trade-off obviously, but there's also trade-offs to access. The more freeway-like it is, the less access you can have directly onto 13. So I think what we're trying to get is a little bit of an idea of what kind of comfort level the council has with those trade-offs. Keeping 13 moving or on the high end or having lots of access, which would be that super street where there's a bunch of accesses and those turnarounds, and then a couple that are in that hybrid that's in the middle.
Yeah. So, you know, as I was listening, I was going back to 13 and 5 with a separated grade. Traffic moves well, you're not having all those backups anymore, and you still have access to 5.
That's right.
And you can still go across on 5.
Right. And what Chris was mentioning was that on the, with the freeway, you cannot have access spacing as closely anymore. So we have 5, Washburn, Chauvin, all right in a row. If you wanted to have a more free...
Yeah, Washburn and Chauvin are very close together.
Right. But then you do get access across, access, more direct access to 13 with those, and that would be more the six lane at-grade with signalized intersections, those turnarounds. But as you're saying with 5, it is a more free-flowing trunk highway 13. And so that would be less access directly in 13. We still have availability to get onto 13 just at farther parts spacing.
Okay. Dan Gustafson?
One of the things that struck me when I was looking at this, and Washburn's going to be an interesting area to try to figure out, I can tell you that.
I know.
But when I get down to Nicollet, and it's always, it's always been what we thought at some point would happen is some sort of pedestrian bridge or something because we have the orange line there on one side of 13 and we have our parking right on the other side of 13. And we have residents on both sides and they're trying to cross back and forth all the time. And when I see that it's fair for comfort level for crossing after spending that kind of money in that area, it's like, how does that happen? That's something I think really needs to be fixed. Our heart of the city is growing dramatically and it's going to continue to grow. And you're going to have that crossover between the parking right across the street or the orange line, whichever system you're going to be utilizing. You know, how do you make that happen? Even though we didn't have the state fair this year, Dan, you see, you live in the neighborhood, there are hundreds, there are thousands of people actually walk across that street from the north side or the south side of 13 to get over the parking right, just to get on the buses to go to the fair. You know, and how do we transition them over? I know years ago, John at 35 Solutions used to talk about that MMDOT was looking at the possibility of putting some sort of pedestrian-type bridge crossing there so that we can get across from both areas, which are both transit areas for us.
So Jen, maybe we can cover Nicollet Avenue and then the council can talk freely about whether we want to talk about Washburn or Nicollet.
I'm going to go to Ryan. You wanted to make some comments before I go to Vince.
Maybe I could help frame it a little bit more. With the five interchange, the city agreed to have three direct accesses closed. We lost one on the north side by Dodge, not Dodge, Burnsville, Park Jeep. Then we lost two on the south side. So we gave up those access points in order to have an interchange. I think what they're trying to ask is, are we, are we as a council willing to give up some of that access in order to get a better flowing Highway 13? Are you willing to say, okay, to get to the landfill, you're going to have to go all the way back to Chauvin and then get off there and come backwards to go up to Washburn? I think, or are you accepting of, or is it a non-starter to have those U-turns on 13? I think that's the kind of question we're trying to ask. Is there any like non-starters that from these that we could say, you know, this comes forward? So anyway, I'm just trying to help understand what we gave up on 5 and, you know, and it just worked out fine. I think everything's going, you know, but to get the Park Jeep now, you have to go past Park Jeep and exit off and then go around and then come back there. So, you know, it worked okay there. I'm just, I think...
Well, you know, you guys are the experts. You need to tell us what works well.
Yeah, but the flip, I'm sorry, the flip side is, is, you know, we might have a point that's an expert, but the council may just have zero interest in hearing about it. You know, these turnarounds, it can be a challenging thing. So anyway, I'm just trying to help explain what we're, is there non-starters or whatever?
I think we have, I think we have interested council of flow traffic and safety for our citizens and that's where we really have our big interest.
And if there aren't no non-starters, that's good information too. So we know that we can keep moving these different things forward, so.
Okay. Vince?
Thank you. Ryan, as far as, well, can I just start by saying this was predominantly in Savage. So I appreciate the ability to participate in this because this traffic does ultimately back up into Burnsville. But it feels like this is something that their voice is going to be louder on than ours since it's their businesses that are going to be directly impacted. The, I appreciate the creativity of that hodgepodge roundabout. I don't remember what your, the Carolina example, but I would anticipate a significant amount of negative feedback to something like that from anybody that's in that area. I see why it works, but I could see a massive backlash from people on that because it's just counterintuitive to what I think we've all been accustomed to. And then that, at least in my experience, isn't a very high pedestrian area, I think, to begin with. And I'm just saying that off of my observations more so than anything. If there's facts that would dispute that, I would... If there's facts that would dispute that, I would welcome that. But I think the better flow we can find on thirteen, that would be my main objective. I know when I go to Menards, I just hop off on five and then run that frontage road rather than going up to that next stoplight. And I see quite a bit more people doing that. And same with Park Jeep, you know, I was there just a few weeks ago and it, I don't know, it's a little goofy, but I wouldn't consider it a massive inconvenience. And they seem to be doing just fine there and at U-Haul and everywhere else. So you might have some knee-jerk reactions to eliminating access, but if it can allow more flow of traffic there, that to me seems like the main priority in the area. Here, when we get to Niccollet, I think I have a different, to what Gustafson said, that will be and already is a very pedestrian-heavy area. And I anticipate that probably growing with the amount of activity that we're going to see on north and south side of thirteen with brewery and other things that are coming in in that area, so.
I'm going to go to Jen and then I'll go to Kara.
Okay, so I just wanted to just clarify that Chauvin and Washburn are in Burnsville and we're looking at those with this whole corridor. So about half of it is in Savage and about half of it is in Burnsville. And as far as pedestrian and bike crossing, right now, not so much. But we are planning a trail connection under Cross thirteen to continue up to the river. And that's in our long-range planning. So we're thinking about that now and where would that crossing be? The Lake Marion Trail or Rose Bluff Trail that was constructed a couple of years ago terminates at the Rudy Kramer Nature Preserve and it will continue on to the north. So those kinds of things are being factored in. Where do we put that crossing? Grade separation is what I've been telling the PMT that I think we need to look at in this area because I think eventually, not so much now, we will have more pets and bikes going to the river.
Sure.
Because I think it was the Chauvin interchange that, to move that traffic.
That is the ideal crossing point.
Okay, Kara?
Yeah, not interested in that U-turn thing. That's a big no.
Okay. Dan, Kay?
Well, I, from my perspective, the winner of the, the options is really Highway number one because it gave us the best score for safety and traffic flow. And we were, to Mr. Peterson's point, giving up some access points, but I think that's what everybody has gotten used to when a highway is growing up to be a bigger highway. You can't have the same amount of cross-traffic intersections in. Whereas there's some pain in adjusting to that, people will also enjoy the benefit of the traffic flow much faster. So it's a small sacrifice for a big gain in traffic flow and safety compared to these other options. So for me, it was, and it was sort of in the mid-range of the cost. It wasn't at the high end, wasn't the lowest, but it offered to me the best solutions that gave you that good or fair, right? There was no failing marks on that one.
Yeah. And I would think that if you're going to look at it, to extend the Lake Marion bike trail, you can still do that at Chauvin at that separated grade. And you still have that freeway one concept going through.
And I just want to tag one comment. I think we still need a pedestrian bridge at Niccollet. Doesn't matter what we're doing there, unless we're going to grade separate it, we have to have a pedestrian bridge. It's a whole different area there.
Boy, we have been applying for that for how many years? Fifteen years?
The presentation was, got some good options.
Okay, all right. Let's hear about Niccollet.
But wait, there's more.
Well, it is.
Just like earlier.
Because he says that Niccollet's coming. I said, I'm more interested in hearing about what's going on.
I want to know when we could get the Ginsu knife set along with the rest of the slides.
Okay. Chris, back to you. Let's hear about Niccollet.
It was great input and I apologize for making you wait, but I knew that Niccollet is where your interest is and we needed to get that feedback on Washburn and Chauvin. So I'm going to talk about three different alternatives that we're considering, that we know can function and work at Niccollet Avenue and Highway thirteen. This first option would include an at-grade signalized intersection, much like it is today. We do anticipate, as we look at future conditions, that Highway thirteen would need to be expanded to three lanes in each direction. A lot of the auxiliary lanes from Interstate thirty-five W would need to be extended to the east through the intersection in order to continue to move that volume of traffic and serve the crossstreet needs. And then a minimum, this would also include a pedestrian, a grade-separated pedestrian crossing, similar to what the mayor has alluded to, that the city of Burnsville has been pursuing for a number of years. This is a viable option. It is the lowest of our three costs, the lowest cost of our three options. And it's a relatively familiar design. With this option, there's still some head crossing of at-grade at Niccollet. And because it's an at-grade signalized intersection, we would still, even with the bridge or an underpass, we would still expect to see some pedestrians crossing at-grade. So it won't be foolproof for pedestrians. So that's option one, at-grade for vehicles and grade separation for pedestrians. Okay, next slide. So this is a quadrant interchange configuration. If I may, let me describe what's going on here. This would include lowering of Highway thirteen and Niccollet Avenue would go over the top of Highway thirteen. But it would more or less stay at its existing elevation. So we'd have to depress thirteen now in order to make this work. It includes a T, a signalized T intersection on Highway thirteen to provide access to a service road between Highway thirteen and Niccollet Avenue. That service road would be built over the top of the existing stormwater pond that's currently behind Cup Foods. So it's utilizing that space to provide access. It would include a roundabout intersection south of Highway thirteen on Niccollet with that new service road, plus a signalized intersection on Niccollet Avenue on the north side of the bridge that would provide access directly to northbound Interstate thirty-five W. So northbound Niccollet Avenue could access northbound Interstate thirty-five W without going on Highway thirteen. The pedestrian trail across Niccollet, across Highway thirteen would be on the west side of the Niccollet Avenue Bridge. From the orange line station would go north across the bridge at Niccollet Avenue level. Once across Highway thirteen, it would loop underneath Niccollet Avenue and provide access in then to the MBTA Transit Station. So the two transit stations could be connected with no at-grade interaction with vehicular traffic. This option is the middle-of-the-range cost between the three and certainly has improved safety conditions for both vehicles and pedestrians and bicycles. Next slide. So this alternative is a single-point interchange roundabout. This is a similar approach with Highway thirteen being lowered and Niccollet Avenue going over the top of Highway thirteen, roughly again at the same elevation that Niccollet Avenue is at today. This would not include a signal on Highway thirteen, but access would be provided by more traditional ramps and loops that you would see on an interchange. This would also feature an oversized roundabout at the center of the Niccollet Avenue, Highway thirteen interchange that would tie in all the movements on and off Highway thirteen with the ramps, with Niccollet Avenue traffic and crossing movements there. In the upper right-hand corner of the slide, you can see an example of what this looks like out in New York State as an example. Not the most common interchange, but it is one of those interchange types that are getting more and more popular because of the ability to tie in multiple roadways coming at different angles that a traditional signalized interchange has difficult time with. Some of the pros here, we are able to get pedestrians across Highway thirteen grade-separated, but pedestrians would still be crossing at-grade at Niccollet Avenue in some of these ramp locations to get over to the transit, between the transit stations in the heart of the city. This also because of the larger bridge costs is one of our higher costs, highest of the three costs, alternatives. So next slide is, again, a summary of our evaluation. You can see the no-build condition really doesn't serve the needs at all into the future. So recognition that there is a need for some improvements here. The at-grade signal, the lower of the cost hits some of the marks, especially for pedestrian bicycling across. But not so much when it comes to overall delay for vehicles and safety for vehicles. That quadrant intersection, again, down the middle, about the middle range of the cost. And you can see we're getting good and fair conditions as we look out in the future in a number of the measures of effectiveness categories. That third option, or that grade-separated roundabout option, again, this serves many of these measures very well, good and fair, but it comes with a fairly high cost when compared to the quadrant intersection. So again, this is where we're looking for, not so much for council to choose an option here. We think that there's merits in all three of these options to move forward into the environmental phase. But we would like to hear some input on how each of these options serve the interests of the city of Burnsville, the heart of the city. We've had some good input already from MBTA and Metro Transit. So it's council's turn to provide us some input on these alternatives.
Okay, Kara?
I realize you're not asking us to pick one, but I'm going to anyway. Niccollet B, the hybrid quadrant intersection. To me, it's either do that one or just don't do anything. I mean, the rest of it looks like you would just be throwing money away. So even though, I mean, like Niccollet A is less expensive, crap, you might as well not do anything. You might as well not do any build at all and then save that money. And then Niccollet C, that's the most expensive and it really doesn't address the things that are the biggest concern in our city. So that's my view on that.
Dan Gustafson?
I agree with B myself. It's, we, the capacity is good. I know there's a couple of fairs here, but it really does address the pedestrian and access to transit, which is-
It's a two thing.
That's a TOD district down there. I mean, that's what it's all about, is having that access and a safe access. So it meets a lot of what I would look for for that particular intersection.
Dan, Kay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I would agree. I looked at the value of the walkability, bikeability, community access, and that is spot-on. You know, that ranks up there with managing the traffic, et cetera. But that was such a key priority for that particular location that that carried more weight. And it's obviously less cost than Niccollet C with the roundabout. And I like that transit connection between the two. I mean, those two carry a ton of weight in this decision at that intersection and it serves both of them. And it wasn't the most expensive option. Usually the thing we like the most ends up being more expensive.
Okay, Vince?
I agree, I think B made the most sense and it's checking all the boxes that I believe we're all seeking.
I like B too. It meets the things that we're looking for.
Can you start?
You wanted some feedback, we're giving you some feedback.
Yeah, pretty clear feedback. Is there any more specific items? I heard how it serves pedestrian connection between the transit stations as being perhaps the top priority transit connections. Any concern with having that traffic signal remain or a T-intersection signalized?
I do, I wish it didn't have to have a signal personally. I don't really, I mean that's-
Wish we don't have it.
But.
The summary of, is this the one, is this, this is B? Yeah. You know, the signals are there, but one is on thirteen and the other one is on Niccollet.
Because there's not enough room to put ramps.
Dan will never be late to a meeting again.
That's right, because he's not going to-
He'll come out of Niccollet.
Yeah, because this is a separated grade.
Is that signal is coming on to the roundabout from thirteen or going back down to thirteen from that roundabout? Or is it both?
I think it's both.
Yeah.
It would be a two-way service road and from Niccollet, you'd go down to Highway thirteen, make a right or left on. From Highway thirteen, you'd be able to make a right, eastbound right-hand turn or westbound left turn to the service road and come up to the roundabout at Niccollet.
So we'd still have a challenge with some delays with that light.
Yeah, but not much.
But less than certainly what we would have at Niccollet.
Look at the level of the service.
You think the landowner would be willing to give up that holding pond?
I think it's MINDOT.
There's, I'm sure there's an easement cutting in, but it looks like-
It's, that holding pond is-
Going to butt right up against that retaining wall.
It goes right up against the Shell Station too.
But also that has to do with part of our stormwater drainage system. That, because it's the only one in the heart of the city that collects all of that. And remember, we use gravity to take all of that down.
So this would just go above that?
Yeah.
It'd be pylons to essentially go over the top of it, right?
Yeah. So, but we need that stormwater. It's the only bonding system and we needed to do that because of the way, the elevation and the gravity. And so, so you just have to go around it above it.
That's a great segue into some of our next steps in our environmental review and stormwater management would be one of those, as well as railway impacts and some of the other considerations that were brought up.
But we worked with MINDOT to get that easement for our stormwater pond.
And with the orange line on the south side, southwest, there's not enough room there then to put an off-ramp to go up onto the-
We had a number of other alternatives that we looked at and we got some input from the city, county, MINDOT, Metro Transit, MBTA. And there were, that's a tight spot to squeeze all that in there. We were able to narrow down our options because of the limitations that the site provides.
The only counter to the frustration of having a light there is there's another light not far down and then another light not far, as you go east.
At the school.
Yeah, and then further, and then, you know, past five, there's still some lights are still going to be sung. Yeah, down that way, and then west, there's even- So we've gotten rid of some of the lights, but there's, at this point in time, there's really not a a plan to turn it into a true highway and with on and off- and with on and off-ramps and...
They're only studying from Nicolet going all the way to one sixty-nine, so.
So I think it's the best
Yeah.
solution that we can get, quite frankly.
Ryan and Jen, and Chris, you got what you need?
Yeah, if I could just finish with that very last slide. Some of our next steps is to finalize this corridor vision and review of some of the first project alternatives. We are planning another business advisory group meeting, a virtual meeting, October first in the morning, as well as a virtual public open house meeting on October eighth in the later afternoon evening. As I mentioned, we're gonna be moving into that hybrid environmental assessment study, as well as refinements to the design concepts to continue to move those forward in twenty twenty-one and securing environmental approval for the whole corridor-wide vision. Our first project, as I mentioned, it is in the city of Savage over at Dakota. But this is really gonna set the corridor well with the vision and environmental clearance for, as additional funding becomes available to move other projects forward in the near future. Excuse me. That's all that I had for tonight. I don't know, Jen and Ryan, if you had any closing comments or others from Mendat?
Jen, Brian?
I'll just say that there's a lot of work yet to be done. And so this initial feedback, we've got, we've got a lot of time left to look at and refine. And so I really appreciate you taking the time tonight to give us your feedback so that I can... You know, I'd given feedback to date, but I really needed to hear from the council on these.
Okay, and you got the feedback?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ryan, thank you, Jen, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay. We now go to Michelle. Michelle, the Community Builders Award nominations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This year, we did receive eight nominations for Community Builder, Thirty Day Foundation and Mick Sterling Presents. And that's for our Summer Relief Drive-In Concert Series. Amy Burrell and her work with the CVB, Costco. Emily and Andrew Hayden family for the Kids and Kinship Program. Home Depot. Jennifer Harmoning with the Burnsville Chamber of Commerce. Renita, I'm gonna get this wrong, Iden Schink
Yeah.
For the Burnsville Beehive Facebook page. And Todd Buckwald for Inspiring the Picnic Table Use Program.
And everyone, as you said, have met all of the criterias.
All of the nominations do meet the policy criteria, that's right.
Members of the council, you accept it?
I like them all.
I do too. Let's move forward. Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports. Dan, you have anything to offer?
I have nothing to offer, but I have a few comments to say.
God, don't do it, Dan, really?
I thirty-five Solutions Meeting.
Kara is wanting you to speed it up.
Yeah, it's a late night, I'll go fast.
Yeah, you're at nine oh-two.
We received an Orange Line update at I thirty-five Solutions, which was very enlightening. It's been about, it's a hundred and fifty million dollar total project, fifty-five percent from the SMART grant, and they've expended seventy million so far. So, you know, it was all about, you know, all of the intersections north of us and nothing about ours until the very end, I said, you know, when is Burnsville gonna... So the groundbreaking ceremony date has not been established in twenty twenty-one, but they will let us know as soon as we do. But Ninety-Eighth Street, American Boulevard, Sixty-Six, Knox, Twelfth Avenue, Lake Street, all major construction projects, as we've all witnessed. It's pretty fun to watch some of the progress pictures on their website, and they shared a few of them with us, especially the Knox Avenue Tunnel going underneath four ninety-four, which is about halfway done and they're about to flip to the other side. So pretty, you know, for a transportation person. And obviously, the Orange Line is a very, very big station-to-station bus service project for servicing Burnsville, terminating in Burnsville currently and hopefully will get extended in the future down to the mall in Burnsville. But a very big project. That chewed up most of our discussion time, the rest was some fundamental items. MBTA, we are having a meeting on the thirtieth. We're inviting our Met Council representatives because we have some questions about some requests from the Met Council related to the Red Line. MBTA is a subcontractor of Met Council for the Red Line. And there's some desire to take that Red Line under their own Met Transit governance and operations and not subcontract it out to MBTA. So because it's, in theory, doesn't actually qualify, the Red Line is not really like other major arterial BRTs. It's a little bit more station-to-station and doesn't quite completely meet the specifications for major regional arterial. It really belongs under the Oversight Management Bus, et cetera, Service per view of MBTA. So as much as there's some intimations and discussions going on about not renewing the contract with MBTA, we would actually like to have it renewed and take full control over it rather than subling, like some of our other services. So interesting discussions to come. But I know that Madam Mayor was honored with being named to the Blue Ribbon Commission about Metro, the Met Council Governance and Transportation is one of those things. So I have a feeling you'll have some conversations about that in the future. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Dan, G?
We spent an hour and a half tonight talking about what I reported on, so I have nothing to report.
Okay, Kara?
Mine is still good, so I'm waiting for mine to meet, so.
Okay. Vince?
Just give more kudos to Councilman McKeely for throwing a wonderful modified fire muster this last weekend. It sounds like it was a wild success and very proud of the work that our team did to pull that off so quickly. That's it.
Okay.
Well, team effort, thank you to everyone and hats off to staff. Melanie was involved in that process, Ryan was involved in that process, probably Greg was involved in it somehow too. And, you know, we had a lot of fast-moving parts to get through to ensure that everything was in order and our dots were dotted and our Ts were crossed, I's are dotted, sorry. To be able to make sure that it came off without hitch. We did have somewhere about maybe two hundred and fifty, three hundred cars. We basically packed Buck Hill's parking lot with as many cars that would fit. There were some Walzer cars there and there was a section roped off for a private party they were having. But every car that drove there, barring maybe a couple, was able to come into the lot and enjoy the show at the base of the mountain. And we had tremendous applause, yelling and horn honking after the show was over. So very pleased. And I shared with the council the fire truck. Man was there a parade of cars, a non-stop. I was there for about forty-five minutes watching and it was, it was a steady flow of cars that just never quit. And it would accordion sometimes all the way out to Nicolet and then back in again a little bit. But I have never seen such a constant stream of cars, just it never stopped apparently most of the night. And I'd left and I was getting word from folks there that it continued. So I think families enjoyed the display of all the trucks in the water and maybe even circled around for a couple more views, so. Yes?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
Everybody wants to go home.
Yeah.
So anyway, thanks to the city staff and everybody with the Fire Muster, Tammy and Jim and others that made it happen.
Yeah, it was good.
Thank you.
You did a great job, thank you.
I just...
All right. So I had my first meeting for the Governor's Blue Ribbon Task Force. All of it was a lot of input. I had over six hundred pages to read and did it. So that was good. The other is, so a lot of it was just listening. So because the time is really late, Regional Council Mayors, Greater MSP presented, and the Greater Minnesota Housing Fund presented. Okay, I'm done.
Greater MSP presented.
Oh, yeah. You can go to their website and see everything. And you can do the same thing with the, as I said, the Greater Minnesota Housing Fund, you can do the same. Thank you.
Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
Happy birthday, Mom. It's your eighty-sixth birthday today.
Oh, happy birthday, Mrs. Gustafson, yes. Okay, Melanie, anything?
I'm not standing between you and adjournment. Do you think she's still awake watching?
Okay, we stand adjourned by affirmation, thank you.
No, I miss the dinner tonight.